Call the meeting ordered. Chief Pitts, will you lead us in the pledge? Put your hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation and one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
This time we'll observe a moment of silence.
Hashev, Gustan, Zadra, Sveraza, George, Ayazi, Kishel.
Here.
Do you have any public comment cards? No public comment cards, I'll close the public comment section. Approval of the...approval of the agenda? Motion, second. Do I have a second? All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. All right, item B1, overview of proposed FY12 and 13 City of Reno and Redevelopment Agency budget. Mr. Klinger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This morning, we're going to present an overview of the City of Reno and the Redevelopment Agency budgets to you. I'm going to provide the highlights to the council as we walk through the slides, and then I have budget staff and department staff here that can answer any of your detailed questions. I think the presentation that you're going to see today is a little bit different than what you've seen in the past. We're really just today focused on presenting to you just the highlights of what's included in the manager's recommended budget. I know in the past, the presentations have been a little bit different. We've given you more of an overview of the departments, and today is really just going to be focused on the budget presentation. However, if you want to get into details, obviously, we do have the staff here to answer your questions and present additional information if you'd like. The budget for fiscal year 13, the general fund budget, is going to be, right now, recommended at $155 million. If you look at all funds in the budget, it's $295 million. The budget we're presenting today is based on the priorities that the council set at the end of May in our strategic planning retreat, which focuses on core services, financial responsibility, transparency, and the other priorities that were identified by council at that meeting. The fiscal '13 budget is the first budget in five years with no layoffs, no service cuts, and stabilization of our reserves. The budget includes 1,086 positions, which is actually 20 more than the fiscal '11-12 budget. All 20 of those positions are in the area of public safety, 10 in fire, and 10 in police, and some of those are grant-funded positions where the grants are expiring, or in the case of the SAFER grant for the current year, those were not included in the original '12 budget, but they're in the '13 budget. And we can get into details and explain those. The budget you'll see today accounts for fire deconsolidation, so it has the $11.5 million that we typically receive from the county is not included in the budget that you'll see today. In March, after our strategic planning session, there was some discussion at that meeting, and it was reported in the media that we were $7.5 million short at that time. The budget you'll see today is balanced. We are not short, and part of the reason for that is revenues have continued, particularly the C-tax revenue, has continued to come in higher than anticipated for this fiscal year, which also helps us in fiscal '13 as well. So, the budget you'll see today is not $7.5 million short. The other thing that has helped is the spending in the current fiscal year. Agencies have been holding the line on spending, and so we have some funds that are going to carry forward, help us balance this year, and then carry forward into next year. The budget also has the lowest staff per capita in more than 10 years, at 4.8 staff per 1,000 residents. As I mentioned, we do have additional positions this year in the budget, and if you look at the population growth in the city, it has actually grown 2.4 percent, and yet we have the lowest per capita. The budget also reflects what we believe are conservative revenue projections. The ad valorem revenue projections that are included in the fiscal '13 budget are down 4.5 percent. The C-tax is just slightly below 2 percent, an actual 2 percent increase in C-tax, and in the last recent months, the C-tax collections have been very good. In fact, the last month's collections were up 16 percent, and those numbers have been included in the budget, have been reflected in '12, and obviously, carry forward into fiscal '13. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'll get into the first slide, which gives you a presentation of the fiscal year 2012 revenues and expenditures. As you can see, for the current fiscal year we're in, the budget is $173.2 million. The reason we get down to $155 is for a couple reasons. One is the county's transfer for consolidation is not included in the '13 budget. That's $11.5 million, and the '13 budget that's presented to you today also does not include about $4.5 million of federal funds. So that's how you get from the $173.2 down to the $155. The next slide just gives you a presentation of all the different revenue sources compared to what the amended budget was, compared to what staff is projecting at this point. You can see on this that the fund balance, the beginning fund balance was down. That was down primarily due to franchise fees falling short last year. Because the franchise fees were down after we adopted the budget, we began this fiscal year with a higher-than-estimated revenue. Other miscellaneous transfers and smaller reimbursements are down as well, and then traffic citations are down as well. You can see from this graph, the C-tax from what was originally projected to where it is today is almost $1.4 million higher. That has obviously helped us balance the current year's budget and helps us with next year's budget as well. The next slide gives you a picture of the current expenditures in the current fiscal year. You can see the amended budget compared to what's projected. The salaries and wages are higher compared to the amended budget, and that is primarily due to our estimated cost for the terminal pay for fire deconsolidation. We have some terminal pay included in there, and that's why you see that number being higher than what was included in the amended budget. The non-department category on there, those are transfers between funds, debt service, event center debt, capital projects. That also includes, the non-department line also includes the $6.2 million in workers' compensation fix that the council approved earlier this year, or actually, last calendar year, to fix the workers' comp fund. So that's actually included in that non-department line. Next slide just gives you an overview of the council priorities that were approved at the February 29 strategic planning session. Don't need to go over these with you, other than to say, as we put the budget together, these are the priorities that we looked at. We had conversations with each one of the council members to get your input on how we achieve these priorities, and you'll see that reflected in the budget as we go through Now we get to the fiscal '13 budget overview. As I stated earlier, $155.6 million in general fund. The stabilization fund, or the contingency fund, is budgeted at $2.85 million. That is actually up from the current fiscal year. It's actually budgeted, was a budget originally in this fiscal year at 2.2, so actually, the balance in that account goes up under the budget that's before you today. The ending fund balance in the fiscal year '13 budget is approximately $6 million, and that's at the minimum required amount by state law of 4 percent. Obviously, our goal is to increase that reserves, and that's part of our fiscal responsibility and sustainability, is that we increase those reserves over time. Ideally, we'd like to see that balance at at least 8.3 percent, which is one month's operating, or even higher. Really, I'd like to see it at 16 percent, which is really two months' worth of operating. But that's a goal that we're going to have to achieve over time as the economy comes back. You'll also see reflected in the budget as we go through areas where we have aligned funding. Street funds, for example, we used to pay for some of the streetlights out of the general fund. We've actually moved those items into the street fund. So you'll see throughout the budget where we've made alignments to put items where we think they're more appropriately reflected in the budget and paid for out of what we believe is the correct fund that they should be paid out of. Payroll outsourcing, that's reflected in the budget as well, and you'll see that. And then, obviously, we're continuing to hold the line on expenditures in fiscal '13. We do have some additional items that we've included, but those items, again, all tie back to the council's priorities, and also, there's items in there that we think will help us be more efficient as an organization. So the first slide is the fiscal year '13 revenue projections compared to the fiscal year '12. The first item on there, taxes, that's your ad valorem or property tax. You can see that reflects the 4.5 percent decline there of $42.1 million. The intergovernmental transfer is the other one I'll highlight on this page, the $61.1 million down to the $45.4. The $61.1 includes the transfer from the county in the current budget, which is not in the budget for fiscal year '13 due to deconsolidation. And so, the $45.4 million number that you see there, most of that, $41.2 million of that is the C-tax, and again, for fiscal year '13, we are recommending a, or projecting a 2 percent increase in the C-tax over the current fiscal year, which we believe is conservative, given the trends that we've seen in the C-tax collections in the last, you know, six months. So overall, revenue for fiscal year '13, you can see the $173 for '12 compared to the $155.6 for fiscal year '13. Full-time equivalents, talked about this a little bit. You can see the full-time equivalents for the City of Reno going back to fiscal year 2008, where we had $1,619 FTE. Where we're at today, $1,066. That $1,066 number does not include the SAFER positions, and that's why you see the difference between the '12 and the '13. As I mentioned earlier, the difference in the public safety positions. We do have some positions that we are adding in the budget, and we'll go through those as we go through the budget, but again, these are areas where we think it'll make the operation more efficient, and we'll go through that as we go through each department. The next slide talks about staff per capita, going back to '02-'03, at almost 7.5 staff per capita, compared to where we are at today, at 4.8 staff per capita. We tried to find some national averages to see how we compared to other cities. The problem you have when you do that is some cities include public safety, some cities don't include public safety. If you look just at the average overall of other cities, the average is about 6.5 per thousand, so at 4.8, we're well below the average when we compare to other cities. The next slide just gives you an overview of the different departments, the current budget compared to the manager recommended budget, and you see on that slide, if you look at it on the percentage change, you see some significant swings in there. City manager's office in particular, 28 percent, and I just want to clarify and put on the record right now that a lot of that is due to movements in and out of the city manager's office. We moved the economic development director in there, the legislative affairs. So it's not that the city manager has increased his budget 28 percent, but it is moving some of the pieces around and combining that. I just want to make that clear, because that number really jumps out on the page when you look at it. This is just the balance of the budgets that we'll be covering, we won't be covering today, but just wanted to give you an overview of all of the budgets, and there you see the total expenditures, again, of $155.6, which balances to the revenue side, obviously. So the first budget that we'll get into is the city council budget, and as we go through each one of these budgets, you'll see the slides are very similar, where we compare the current year adopted budget with the manager recommended budget, comparing salary and wages, benefits, services, and supplies. And then, what we've done is we've highlighted areas where we have included enhancements to that budget, or additions to that budget. In the case of the city council, you see the first item on there is the Lyra Theater. We have put $150,000 in the city council budget for the Lyra Theater, and the $51,000 of fund alignment, let me explain that a little bit. What this is, is there are items that we previously did not include in the budget, such as our chamber membership, Nevada Hispanic Services, and other items, and what we decided and what we talked about is, instead of trying to find it throughout the year, let's just include it in the budget. And so, the $51,000 reflects items that we've paid for in the past but didn't budget upfront, and what we're saying this time is, if these are important, let's just put them in the budget and have it reflected right from the start. That way, staff doesn't have to scramble to try and find the funding for these items later. And, Mr. Mayor, I will stop at this point and see if there's any questions on this.
Any questions so far? Hold for a moment. Does she have a second? One? Go ahead.
I do. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good morning. For the record, Kayden Smatiyevich, Assistant City Manager. I do think it's important to note, at this particular time, Mr. Klinger did just mention some of the items that had previously been expended but not included in the budget, and that those had been added in. There is one important exception that was in that category of things that wasn't always included but that we paid for, and that was, that is our annual membership to the League of Cities, the Nevada League of Cities, and we have not included that in the budget for this year. We had received some prior council direction that there was a desire, perhaps if we needed funds to balance our budget, that that would be one place that we looked to find those funds, and so, we currently do not have funds budgeted for a membership for the Nevada League of Cities, so I wanted to point that out and give the council opportunity to ask us about that membership, continuation of that, and just point that particular item out.
How much money is that?
$27,000.
That's...we need to take a break right now. I know we're just starting, but I think we need to take a break.
Good place to break, Mr. Mayor. Close labor session.
Let's call the meeting back to order. Mr. Klinger.
Mr. Mayor, you want to go to item B5?
Before we have the presentation, let me have Chief, before we do the presentation, have one guest, one person, which would be Mr. Voskamp.
Sir, if you don't mind, I could speak outwards if that's...
That'd be fine, sir. Okay, presentation, please.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, manager, Klinger, members of the council. For the record, Michael Hernandez, Reno Fire Chief. Item B5 is an action item that speaks to our 2011 SAFER grant application. This grant was a grant that we had applied for several months back. This grant provides for staffing. This is a two-year grant. We have asked FEMA to amend the specifics of the grant. Initially, council, council recall that we had asked for 24 positions. We are now asking for 64. We have received notification from FEMA that our grant, we have received a pre-award notification, and staff is seeking direction with respect to replying back to FEMA and the positive that we would accept the grant if awarded. If council moves in that direction, we anticipate formal award within the next 10 to 15 days. There are specifics to the grant in your staff report. That's, in essence, the summary of item B5. I'll be more than happy to take any questions.
Any question, counter Ms. Sveraza.
Yeah, Fire Chief, this is really, really great news. One of the questions I have, if we accept this grant, will that open up all of our stations in the city of Reno?
Yes, ma'am. This will give us the capability to fully operate all of our stations, and to provide for depth of resources, and to manage multiple events at the same time. It is a step in the positive direction, and it will allow us to continue to follow industry best practices with respect to service delivery in the fire arena.
So, no more brownouts?
No more, well, I'm not going to say no more brownouts, but the extent of the brownouts that we currently are undergoing would be essentially a thing of the past.
Wonderful.
Yes.
Thank you.
Chief, and just for the record, not only does this give us the 64 positions that we're asking for here, but it also saves the other SAFER grant that we've had in place for the other 10 positions we were worried we were going to lose...
That's correct.
...in the event. So we're really, I mean, it's really putting us in a position where...
I think the big takeaway this morning, sir, is the fact that we will not have to issue any layoff notices.
Absolutely.
That's right. Great job.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think we do need to give credit, not only to the chief, but Maureen, just absolutely incredible...
Yeah, staff did a great job on this.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Absolutely.
You guys have just done an incredible job.
Would you two ladies stand up so that everybody can see? Ms. Sveraza.
Mr. Mayor, I think that this is very important to the safety of everyone in this community, and I want to thank everyone involved. There's a lot of animosity, and the papers like to do that, but it's just hard negotiations, City of Reno and 731 and the county, but when we all work together, this is what happens. I think that the membership of 731 came to us and helped us with this, trying to change things in their contract to make this happen too, like they did last time for the SAFER grants, and working with our staff and the chief. This is how things work when you work together, and I really want to take my hat off to who you guys selected as your president, has helped a tremendous amount, absolutely. But, to get everyone to work together to get this done is just absolutely amazing. I know you also went back to Washington, Mr. Mayor, and helped out a lot on that. I know that there's people who have to set up those meetings and do all the legwork, and like you said, you're the window dressing, but sometimes you need that window dressing to sell the house. And also, the delegation in Washington, I mean, every single person worked together on this to get this done, and it's meaning a much, much safer Reno, and I just can't say how happy I am to be leaving with this problem solved for me. Thank you very much.
Ms. Sveraza.
Yeah, those are exactly my comments. You know, thank God for Senator Reed and what he's done for this community in assisting in the mayor and the entire staff and the team, but there's other one, one other issue, and I mean, this is, this was a partnership and a team effort which included 731, and the concessions that they have made in order for us to basically have a streamlined operational budget has gone a long, long way to making this thing work, and they need to be recognized for that, too.
They sure do, and, you know, people say we're fighting or we're mad at each other or we're in negotiations. Look, I've sat across the table from two or three guys. I'm looking at them right now. And I'm looking at you too, Seth, but you know, it's not personal. We have things to do, we need to work together, and like everybody says, we've been working together, and we've sat down with them, and my hat's off to everybody in 731 that has helped us and worked with us. You know, we've kicked each other, we've beat each other, but we didn't, we didn't do it in the news media, other people did it in the news media, but we were able to sit down and talk, and in fact, I was getting so that I was dependent on Voskamp giving me a call every day. I was getting neglected and feeling if Dennis didn't call every day, I thought they didn't love me anymore, but we've had, it's been a great negotiation, it's been great teamwork, and I thank everybody in 731 with working with us, and thank everybody, our congressional delegation. Senator Reed was very influential in helping us, but all of our congressional delegation stepped up to the plate and helped us, but this is just fantastic news, Chief, and thank you, thank you too, young ladies, for helping us very much, because without you, we wouldn't have got it. You're on a first-name basis with these people back there. They trust you, they believe in you, and y'all have done an outstanding job, and thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, if I could...
I would just like to echo the other comments and not be long about it, but something that we have seen evolve in the last year or two that you just talked about, and Councilman Hashev and Councilman Ayazi talked about, is evolved in leadership. I think 731's leadership has evolved when we first met, when the new leaders were elected, how they would change and how they would try to work with the city, and this is proof that they're doing it. Your leadership as the Fire Chief and also the other part of the delegation helped out, that's what it's really about. We always talk about having great people at the city. This is a culmination of one event that is huge for so many people, not only for the people that won't lose their jobs, but for the people that are protected by the fire union, by the fire people, the men and women that work in the fire department in our city. That's what's important. Leadership with a capital L has stepped forward to help this city.
And, Mr. Mayor, exactly, the leadership and the cooperative relationship that we have is what will take us forward. Yeah, we definitely need to celebrate today, but tomorrow, we've got another major task in front of us, and that is to, we've been successful in responding to the county's intent to get a divorce for the Consolidated Services for Fire in our region. As you all know, none of us at this table believed that that was the right decision, but you all helped us make sure that we're protecting every single Reno citizen, that there will not be a blip in service to our citizens, our residents of the City of Reno. The work that we start tomorrow, so let's celebrate today and begin tomorrow, is we need to keep our arms around getting regional service for this community, and the leadership that you've teamed with us here at the city level will help us get there. We'll be able to move forward.
Now, all you guys at 731, don't start thinking, because your leadership is working with us, that you need to get rid of them now. Please, don't do that. No, 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 just because we're bragging on them a little bit here. It's still know that they're going to draw sabers tomorrow morning whenever we go, so it's a great team, a great effort, great fire department, and we're very, very lucky to have them. to have all the fine people we have. Mr. Frazee?
Yeah, I also do want to thank 731. They've given back over 12 and 1/2 percent in concessions, and I think that's gotten lost with all this argument, and they're going to continue to give back. I've also been pretty vocal about the overtime in the past, and I just want to thank 731, that's gone down substantially. They've really worked with us with swapping shifts and the other things that they've done, so I just want to say I really appreciate it, and I agree with what the rest of the council has said about the leadership.
Yes, Chief.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just one final comment. I'd like to extend my heartfelt thanks to our city manager under his leadership. He has allowed us the opportunity to explore alternative avenues with respect to solving challenges and problems that each department faces, and Mr. Clinger brings a fresh, new management perspective to the management team, and it was under his guidance and tutelage that we were able to accomplish many of these things.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, any other discussion? Did we get a, did we get a motion? No, I've already...
He waved it to the back end.
Oh, yes. Mr. Voskamp?
You sounded a little resigned to have me come up. For the record, Jeff Voskamp, Vice President, Local 731. I represent the members of Reno Firefighter Association, Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. Manager. There's a saying in the fire service about how the first due engine, how the first due engine goes, so goes the fire. What that means for us is, when the first engine arrives on scene, whatever decisions they make determines the path of the fire. If the fire goes well, if they make bad decision, fire goes bad. I think we're the first due to this problem right now, us, and I think we're making the right decisions now for the people that are going to follow us, to do the right thing, to basically make a better fire department. We have economic problems, we all know that, but the problems that we're dealing with today are brought on by a third party, and we know who that is, and we think, or at least in my opinion, I believe it's, it was an irresponsible action on their part that's caused us to put our constituents and the county's constituents and my firefighters, your firefighters, in a bad spot. I think what this does is, we've shown that instead of just simply cutting fire protection, going down the simple answer, when you have two great ladies, which thank you again, when you have us working together, it shows what we can do. I mean, look what we've accomplished today by this pre-award, by voting for this today. You're going to have a better, stronger fire department than you did yesterday, and I think that's fantastic. I think we all need to be aware of that, that what happens when we work together, when we are the first due and we do the right thing, what we can do for our constituents and what we can do for our firefighters. And it's the safety of our firefighters and the safety of our constituents, there's not one that takes precedence over another. They're kind of like on this little balancing act, because if you improve the safety of the, for the citizens, you automatically improve the safety of my firefighters. If you improve the safety of the firefighters, you improve the safety for the citizens. So that's why when we fight, as you say, when we pull out our sabers, we may say it's for the safety of the firefighters, but in reality, it's for the safety of all of us. So I want to say thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize if I don't call enough.
It's okay.
I will text you more if that's what you want.
My counselor's got me over it now. I'm going to be okay.
All right. You just call me whenever you want, I keep my phone on. And I want to thank all the rest of you. You obviously haven't voted yet, but from what you're saying, I think you're going to vote in the positive, and I really want to say thank you. I am impressed where we've come, and I believe that, like you said, the work's not done. We have a lot of work ahead of us, but really, it's kind of our job to do that. It's, you're a public servant, I'm a public servant. But I really want to thank these two ladies again. I love you both. I think those two have done more, what they've done for the fire service is better than any fire I've ever run into or anything else. I think what they've done is saved 64 of my members' jobs potentially with this pre-award, and I want to thank you again. Thank you very much. Eighty. You're right. The number keeps going up, I'm happy. Thank you very much. I appreciate everything that we're doing, and I hope that we can continue going down this road.
Thank you very much. Mr. Voskamp, could you answer one question?
Is it going to be a personal one?
No, sir. No, no, no. Why is it people refer to firemen as being a little loose up here? And I finally figured it out when we were meeting. Everybody else is running out of a burning building, and you guys love running into a burning building. Doesn't that show something up here?
You can speak to my wife on that, she'll tell you. I'm probably not the sanest person. No, you're right, it's a, it's a unique...
Yes.
Unique quality that we have.
It's a unique character and a quality, it sure is.
I don't know if it's a good one, but it's unique.
It's a good one, as long as we protect each other.
Yes, sir.
And our negotiations, we might grill and growl and argue and slam and do everything else, but thank you, Dennis, thank you, thank all the members of 731 with working with us, we appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, council. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
I guess somebody else say something nice about the Chief.
You have the staff report pending your approval, sir.
All right. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank y'all. All right. Okay. All right, we're going to adjourn here for a minute, step outside and do a press conference. Do it outside or inside?
Recession.
We're in the recess. Did I say adjourn? So y'all, y'all know the definitions of all these words.
The reason for the increase there is we did move some positions that formerly were in other areas into the city manager's office. The Economic Development Director or Administrator, I'm sorry, Economic Development Administrator was one of those positions. The Legislative Relations Position, Neighborhood Services as well, is included in that, so that's why you see the increase in salary and wages. It's not due to increasing salaries, I just want to make that point clear. The other item on there, the Services and Supplies, you see the increase there, and what we've outlined for you is where those increases come from. Special Events, Program Enhancements, we have included in the budget an additional $355,000 for special events, and I would ask Cadence Matievich to go through what we are proposing for the special events, and this goes back to the discussion we've had regarding the pub crawls and how we sponsor or how we fund or cost share, if you will, special events costs with a promoter. Someone turn it over to Cadence to cover that piece.
Thank you, Mr. Clinger. For the record, Cadence Matievich, Assistant City Manager. As Mr. Clinger just indicated, as in this, Councilwoman Zadra and Councilmember Hasecheff and Iasi will know, we have, over the course of the last year or so, engaged on a number of occasions with the council's Special Events Subcommittee and talked about various ways, sort of policies or programs that we could put together for sponsorship of special events that take place in the city of Reno. And we've taken a couple tries at it and hadn't exactly gotten there. And following last week's council meeting and the discussion regarding requirement of permits, city services costs, staff sat down and has for your consideration today what would be a significant policy change from the policy that we've had since you adopted our special events ordinance, our current special events ordinance back in 2005. And as the council will remember, at that time, there was a concern about cost recovery, there was a concern about being sure that we were identifying all the costs associated with special events. We were obviously in a very different economic situation then. Event organizers were able to go and solicit sponsorships from the private sector, those appeared to be plentiful, the number of sponsors were plentiful. Under the current economic conditions, and given that the council has made special events one of your priorities, staff wanted to bring back to you for your consideration an amendment to your policy that requires 100% cost recovery, and consider perhaps a cost-sharing model, as Mr. Clinger indicated, and a change in that policy from anywhere, from, changing from that 100% cost recovery model to anywhere from a 75% to a 50% cost recovery model. And this $355,000 that we have identified in the budget would allow for a policy change to 50%. And so, wanted to give you the opportunity to talk about that today. I do have some, some numbers that may help you as we talk about this and determining what the appropriate cost recovery percentage is, if in fact you do wish to deviate from that. We're anticipating in fiscal year 12, 13, that we will have $687,000 in city service costs that are provided to special events. And again, under your current policy, there's a requirement that the event organizers reimburse us for all $687,000. There are a couple of events that I would call out that the city has traditionally either produced on its own or been a significant partner in producing. The first one of those is our annual Veterans Day Parade, and staff would absolutely recommend that we continue funding that at 100%. New Year's Eve is another one. We partner with the downtown casino properties. We pay for the cost of public works and police services for that event, and they pay for the costs of the fireworks, the insurance, the entertainment downtown on that evening. And again, we would recommend continuing 100% sponsorship for that event. And then we do annually allocate about $5,000 for film shoots. As the council will recall, we do have a provision that we only charge 50% of the police staff time associated with film shoots, and so, again, recommending maintaining 100% of that funding, that $5,000. So that, that leaves us with the balance, and if the council were to choose to move forward with a 50% cost recovery model, given those numbers, that amount would be $321,333, easy for me to say. And so, we do, we would have a little bit of a cushion within that $355,000, that if some new events were able to come forward because of the city's contribution to costs, that we do have some room to grow some new events. If the council were to look at a 40% cost recovery, that amount would be $257,000, and at 30% cost recovery, you're looking at approximately $193,000. So obviously, some room there to make a determination whether you wanted to apply this 50% across the board. It would be a uniform, if you will, sponsorship, I think addresses some of the challenges that we've had about, you know, which events do we focus on? Do we focus on events that are centered on quality of life? Do we focus on events that have significant economic impact? Do we focus on things that bring tourists to town? And this would treat all events equally. It would help the largest event, and it would help the smallest event. And I think most importantly, it would send a message, an enhanced message to our community that this council and this city are committed to special events, they think that they're important, and that this is a step that we're taking to try and support those that we have and help grow new events. With that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions, help provide additional information if I can.
Any questions?
Could we maintain a policy, the $355,000 is 50% across the board cost recovery, correct?
Correct.
So staff would not have the flexibility of looking at event on a case-by-case basis, saying 50% is best-case scenario, in this case, maybe 75%, maybe even 100% depending on the event?
If you were to adopt the policy of 50% cost recovery, no, that would not give, give staff that flexibility. And I will share with you, Councilman Hasecheff, we have, you know, we've, staff has struggled with that, of how do we create a sponsorship program that can be easily administered, that has factors that are, that where the city is not favoring one type of event over the other, that we get away from some of those first amendment issues that I know you've heard about, that it is essentially the same program for everybody. It's from the smallest to the largest, they all, they all share in the benefit.
So where the cut would be made is maybe an event that came in last year and had 100% cost recovery, might not make it this year to the 50% pool, so to speak?
Yeah.
Because in the past, what I thought staff would do is they looked at the event, how many people they brought in, tourism, sales tax, revenues, those sorts of things that help everybody, and we use those factors to determine how much of a cost recovery.
That's not exactly correct, Councilman, and you are right, that there are a couple of losers in this scenario, at least in this first year, and I think we could, you know, potentially, depending upon where the council lands, if you're favorable to this policy, we could use some of that cushion to help bridge these folks. The balloon races would be a good example. They've, they've been getting 100% sponsorship of their city service costs. So for them, and I've identified them, it's Tour Dené, the Great Reno Balloon Race, and the Reno River Festival. Those essentially are the people who would be put at a disadvantage from this, you know, there's another 100-plus events that would benefit from it. So, and I want to clarify a little bit, if I could, Councilman. Staff responds to requests for sponsorship. We did, we, it was, we believe that the direction was not for us to independently look at events, but only when sponsorship was requested, then we would take into consideration those elements that you outlined. We wouldn't just automatically do that for every event and make a determination, it was only upon request that we did so.
That's all I have.
Yeah, I think I'm with Pierre on this one, and I'm not sure who would make the decisions, but if it was, I think the policy should be up to 100%, so you could deal with it, because who would be the big winners about this policy? I would think now would be maybe Hot August Nights and Street Vibrations, or are they separate because they're under contract?
No, currently, Councilman Iasi, the only event organizer that we have a sponsorship contract with is the Reno River Festival. That was a three-year contract that the council approved, and this year will be the last year of that. And yes, if you look at it from a purely a dollars standpoint, Hot August Nights is probably the biggest beneficiary, but I think it's proportionate to the city services that are required by the event, what they would be saving. And I do think that one, one thing that this perhaps would help address some of the feedback that I know the council's been receiving recently, is the city doesn't have a vested interest in making sure that our costs stay down. You know, you charge us 100% of it, so what incentive do you, do you have to be sure that you're, that you're only charging us what truly needs to be? And I think under a cost-share model, where everyone receives a portion of their city service costs paid by the city, and it's not my belief that that's the case, that I think we have been only charging for those services that are necessary, but certainly, it will force us to sharpen that pencil.
But on some of those, like you have, those two bigger ones I'm saying, they have reserves larger than the city of Reno right now, and they've offered to particularly, Street Vibrations says, "We'll pay our full cost," because that's a for-profit business. So I think some leniency, because that would help subsidize some of the smaller ones. So if the policy was up to 100, I know you don't know how you would go about doing that, but we do that at the Arts and Culture Commission, they take applications and they weigh them and they give some, some advice about who gets funded and who doesn't.
Certainly.
So whether it goes to the, maybe the Arts and Culture Commission would handle that, or, you know, if we had a budget for this and everyone put their applications in, but I would rather have Street Vibrations pay 100% to subsidize the balloon races than to say now the balloon races have to come with 50%, because it's a for-profit company who makes some pretty good money. And also, to let us with some anomalies like the air races, for example, we charge them 100%, I believe, right now, but with the tragedy they had, if they come to us and say, "We need more funding," I'm perfectly willing to give them that. We told them, "If you guys need funding to keep afloat, we could try to be your backstop." But some of these projects don't need that funding, even at 50%, they just don't need it anymore.
And I think what you'll hear, what you will hear from them, and I certainly don't want to speak for the Special Events Coalition, but I did have an opportunity to talk with some of the representatives from the coalition who were present at last week's council meeting, and you may recall that they also attended the council subcommittee meetings and said, "We believe it's an equity issue. If we're being asked to pay 100%, then so should everyone."
Well, I understand they're saying that, but that's just hooey. I mean, personally, for me, I don't think that's an equity thing. The city has helped them when they started off... The city has helped them when they started off by paying 100 percent and grown them to where they are. And now, if we want to use that to help fund someone else, I think that, I'll say, I think that's them being greedy now, in, in my opinion. They've got larger reserves than we do. They pay their executive directors more than we pay our city manager. I, I just don't think it's, it's proper that that's the criteria we use to try to maintain this act of fairness when they're basically, and then they take some of that money and give it away to other, to other groups. You know, they have their donation arm, too, a foundation, or we could give that directly to help people out. So, I mean, my opinion is it should be up to 100 percent, and we try to come up with a, a plan or a policy, and I know you've been trying to get in here.
Excuse me, Mr. Vice Mayor. Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. We will collaborate with staff with whatever direction the city council provides, but we do need equitable factors and criteria, so the application of those factors is appropriate across the board. And they already have that established in their review process now, but as we change it, I just want to let you know, we'll coordinate with them on that.
I mean, and that just, someone who gets, for instance, half of Hot August Nights is what, $90,000 or something like that?
Probably right around there.
That funds all the beer crawls we do. So, to say, "We'll give that back, and then we have to talk about these guys hiring 10 more people," how do we grow that next event? And quite honestly, what these same groups say, just because they have it in Reno, we're not the only beneficiary. They get nothing from Sparks. They get nothing from Washoe County. I don't think Hot August Nights gets much from Reno RSCVA. They should have to go to those other groups to fill that gap, not just, just because they have it in the city of Reno, but it's larger than us, when they say, "Hot August Nights" says, "We, we help out Carson City." Well, then why aren't they helping to fund the events? It's only the citizens of Reno that fund these events, and it's larger than just Reno anymore.
Okay. So, Councilman, if I could, perhaps what I'd like to suggest to move things along, because it's been a good morning, and I feel like I'm the fun buster here, that if, if council is in favor of the enhancement to the program, that, that today, you know, you, you give us direction to come back, either, you know, we, certainly, we could talk about it over the next couple of days and come back at your workshop on Monday, have some additional discussion, if, if you think that's appropriate there, or perhaps look at scheduling a meeting of the special events subcommittee, to have some additional dialogue around that. But for, for, for right now, continue with the 100, you know, the 100 percent cost recovery model, and, and look to put, to quickly have some...
But to solve your problem, we could at least right now just say "up to" instead of 100 percent. That gives flat, staff flexibility in some of the things coming up. Because I know that you're working right now on things that are happening in July or August, that you need that flexibility now.
Yeah, and I think, see, I missed Chase that down. I, I think that, you know, they, that, that may be a little too much discretion for your staff, perhaps, that, that, you know, and, and what I would hate to create is a race to the finish line of, you know, what Jamie and I are probably getting voicemails right now of people saying, "I want a piece of that, that, that we'd like to take the time to, to craft a equitable policy and process."
Well, it's not in front of us now to change the ordinance, so we can't do it today anyway.
Right.
And I'm the only one who is speaking, so I'm not sure what the...
Mr. George.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, could we do, and I hate to go backwards on this, but, I mean, could we do it where it's 100 percent unless you're in a sponsorship agreement with us? I mean, if we do a sponsorship agreement, we could do, at that point in time, it's, you've got all the flexibility in the world, you know, and it could be, it could be just that we're covering part of the services.
And Councilman George, that's what we have right now. And we have, we have had, as an example, in the current fiscal year, the, the events that we've sponsored totaled $140,000. And so, clearly, that, the 355 is a bump to that, and staff wanted to bring that in response to the feedback that we'd had from you at, at your strategic planning session, you know, of saying, "Look, we, you know, we, you've put this on the backs of some other entities, we, you know, we want it, we want to take some additional steps to show our commitment to special events." And so, that, that was the reason for the enhancement, and, and our intent had initially been that we were going to recommend engaging the council subcommittee and try and come up with some sort of criteria for how we enter into sponsorship agreements, rather than taking them sort of one at a time as we had, and it is that sort of race to the, to the finish.
Couldn't we have, I mean, couldn't we have a deadline of October, of every year you have to put, put in for your, for your sponsorship agreement? And if you don't, obviously, you're paying 100 percent of your, of your, your fees. And that way, we're looking at all of the, all of the requests in a whole, and funding them for the year. I mean, in October, I just do that date out randomly.
Sure. And certainly, that's a possibility. I think, I think there's, there's pros and cons to that.
There is. That's what we do at the RSCVA.
It does allow for some stability. I think the cons are, is that you have new events and new groups. It restricts your ability to respond to those requests in a timely manner, where, you know, if you've, if you've allocated all of your funds at the beginning of the year, and three months into the, into either the calendar year, the fiscal year, whatever that timeline is, you have a great opportunity, then we're coming back and looking for...
But aren't you doing that with this anyway? If you're saying that our current fees are 700,000 and, and, or whatever the number is, and we're going to go a 50-50 with everybody, I mean, you're really doing that anyway? I mean, if someone new comes in, that's going to raise that number, so you're going to have to find additional funding anyway, correct?
That's correct. And that, and, and that's part of the reason that we ultimately arrived at the 355 number, is that based on our estimation of, of what we were anticipating, and certainly, we could have a really large event come in, and then we would be in the position. There is some risk. But as we looked at it and estimated our costs, you know, based on, and we do have some new events built into that, that we've given ourselves a bit of a cushion between that 321 number and the 355, that, you know, we could really have another $50,000 in events.
You could still have the contingency. You could say that the initial allocation's going to be the, you know, based on the events that have applied, the initial allocation's going to be 300,000, but we're going to keep a 55,000 in contingency in case a new event comes in.
Or do it twice a year. Sometimes I'll do that. You'll do $200,000 by October.
Right.
So, so, I mean, you know, and, and it doesn't, I don't think that it necessarily has to be one or the other. You could adjust the cost recovery policy, say, to a 30 percent, which takes you, you know, at that point, based on what we know today. You know, that would be about $193,000 in, in costs that we, that we know we are committing to sponsoring, and, and then you could take the difference between those two and create a program, so that you are supporting every event at some level, and, and then create a process, as Ms. Chase says, that, that has some, some standards and incentivizes things that support our interests.
Well, and, and another thing that the RSCVA does, is they created categories of events, and we could look at that as well. The legacy events would, would address the issue of Hot August Nights. You know, if, if they are standing viable event, should they be at the 100 percent? So, there are the legacy events, and we could create our own categories with the standards to support those as well, so that we would have the flexibility that we're looking for.
And you may recall, Councilwoman, we, we've, we've explored some things like that, and would be more than happy to go back to the drawing board and, and, and take another try at it.
Let me ask you, how does the RSCVA support Hot August Nights?
I think it's just in kind.
In facilities.
Chairs and facilities.
But those facilities are our facilities. You know, we have a contract with them for our facilities, and they give our facilities and say it's their donation, and it isn't. Because if they rented that out, that would come to the city of Reno, that money. So, and they get all the tax revenue from, from the people who come here. Why doesn't the RSCVA say, "We'll pick up the other half for, for Hot August Nights" that the city's not going to put up? I mean, that's my question, is they benefit more than anyone in this whole community is the RSCVA, and I don't see them coming to the table to help fund this.
I mean, we, we, we do receive substantial sales, I mean, room tax revenue here at the city, too.
Comparison to RSCVA, what, is it 25 percent?
No, we get 6 percent, the city? Is it 6 percent or 5 percent of the room tax?
It's a small number.
No, it's bigger than that, because there's, there's debt service.
Yeah. And I, and I think, Ms. Emery can probably help me out.
It's different in different, because I know there's different layers, so downtown they pay more.
We get 5 or 6 percent because of the debt service that's there, too.
And I believe 1 percent of that essentially is available for general fund. 50 percent of that is restricted for parks and recreation, and the other 50 percent can be used for tourism activities. And it is, in fact, how we fund, you know, it's, it's, it goes into the general fund, but it helps to fund our special events program.
I'm just saying, of the 13 percent or so, I think the city's getting probably 5 percent of that, 5 or 6 percent of that, so...
No, I think, I think the RSCVA gets like 13 percent.
No, RSCVA gets like 6 and 1/2 or 7?
That's sounding like 6.
But in any event, I'd be...
Let's get those numbers and get back to everybody.
In any event, I'd be curious how many of these special events we're talking about that brings people here does the RSCVA fund? Because it shouldn't just be the city of Reno funding those things. Everyone who benefits should have a, a play in that.
Well, and I'd like to find out what Washoe County and Sparks contribute to them, too. Also, gang, I probably shouldn't talk anymore, I'm losing it. But we have a major event that's in jeopardy right now.
Dave already brought that up.
And that's the air races.
Right.
Because of the insurance requirements that the airport authorities putting on them. And we need to see, their premiums went from 500,000 to a million, two or a million seven. And so, we need to see if we can help them somewhere down the road, too. But that's something we can look at before we finalize this thing.
And Dave, I, I mean, I don't disagree with you. Even if you look at this $355,000 number, that's $160,000 more than the RSCVA does in sponsorships. I mean, it's...
And I think we just have to be tougher with that and say, and even if these local, if these large, what I don't like about special events, the policy we're trying to do, is we're trying to cap in the small guy who wants to do something at Wingfield Park with 20 people with Hot August Nights, and have one policy that fits. And I like your idea of having, that's why I thought we had, if we had a contract with Hot August Nights and Street Vibrations, the bigger ones, they'd be separate and take it out of this, where everyone knows upfront who's paying what, and you get to negotiate that every year.
Yeah.
As opposed, which we used to have with Hot August Nights, as opposed to just, because throwing in everyone, to me, doesn't make a lot of sense, because we're trying to do too many things.
And I do think, I mean, part of the challenge, as you know, I mean, with any budget, I mean, you look at the RSCVAs, if you're going to put more money towards special events, do you take money away from trying to go out and solicit conventions coming here? Where, where are we going to have the biggest impact? I mean, if, if you're moving money from one spot to another, you're going to, I mean, it's going to have...
Hot August Nights is a huge convention that's already here that needs to get funded. That's what I would say.
Well, a minute ago, though, you were saying that it's a huge event that, that's making money and profitable, and doesn't need to be funded.
No, I'm saying, it needs, it needs to be funded to stay here from the RSCVA's point of view. If they went away, the RSCVA would get hurt more than anyone.
Well, I think the whole community would get hurt.
Well, that's right.
I mean, the sales tax revenue that's brought in during that event, I'm sure is substantial.
And again, most of that goes to Washoe County.
Well, I think that you, you've gotten some direction of where they're going up here and what they're looking for. So, before we go to the final budget, is today the final budget?
No.
Before we go to final, you need to take some of these things into consideration, so that we're not here designing a camel by committee right now. So, come up with some areas that we can look at and see what we can do. Mr. Hascheff?
Yeah, just for staff's benefit, I'm not in favor for uniform policy, 50 percent across the board. And what we did before, talk about equitable with Hot August Nights, is we basically told these organizations, "Look, we will subsidize you and help you grow your, your, your special event, but over time, you have to wean yourself off the city. And if you can afford it, you need to pay for those services." Under this new policy, though, they may not have to fund 100 percent. They may get, you know, 80 percent of, of cost recovery for the city, so whether it's the air races or something else. So, they may be a beneficiary of that.
Yeah, and I think to Councilman Iasi's earlier point, that, you know, the, the policy decision, I don't think has to be made today, and I don't even necessarily know that it has to be made when the budget's adopted. I, I think, you know, most importantly, what we, what we, what your need direction on is, are, are you in favor of, of the budget enhancement, you know, and, and staff will, will work to, with, with the council subcommittee on, on how we expend that $355,000 enhancement?
Well, I think you've gotten good direction from the council today, and I'm with Mr. Hascheff. I don't believe in lumping them all in one, and so, you've got the direction, so we'll work from there.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Klinger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Continuing down the list of items included in the city manager's office budget, the next item on the list is the citizen survey. It's a survey that's done every other year, so we're requesting adding an additional $8,000 next year to, to complete that survey. The next item on the list, project management, that relates to the item that was approved, I believe it was the last council meeting, where the city council approved the outsourcing of our payroll system to ADP. This is a, almost a year-long process to transition from the current system that we have to ADP. There's a lot of technical issues that have to be dealt with, there's training issues. And so, we as staff felt that it was important that we contracted for project management to ensure that that project was successful. The 130,000 represents our estimate of what the budget would be for that project management. It could come in less, and if it did, obviously, that would be savings at the end of the year. The, the next item is the performance management. What we are looking for is putting together a model of performance management that's based on the framework of the balanced scorecard. And what we're looking to do is to develop some performance metrics that are then reported on our website, that report on performance of the different departments and different, you know, different sections of the city, such as dispatch times and those sorts of things, and develop dashboards so that citizens can come to our website and see how the city is performing. And so, we've included in the budget request $50,000 to help fund that initiative. The last item you see on your list is an item that was brought forth in the fall by Councilwoman Zadra. We've included $15,000 in the, in the manager's recommended budget for the bi-local initiative.
Before you go to the next one, would you revert back to the city council? I have one question about getting out of the League of Cities. I personally don't think that we should get out of the League of Cities. I know there's been some problems, I know they've done some different things, but I think overall, that hurts us with the legislative session and lobbying and working with our other cohorts throughout the state, and I think we should stay in that. The city of Sparks just resigned and went back into the League of Cities, and they were unhappy with things, but they saw fit to do something. And, and I know there are some problems and some spending and stuff, but we need to work on those at the League of Cities meeting. And I personally don't think we should get out of it. Mr. Hasheff?
Mr. Mayor, I agree with you, the League of Cities is, is a wonderful organization. But I think before, personally, before we say we'll sign up, we should make them give us the, the financial data that we asked for at the convention that we went to down in Southern Nevada. They still haven't got us that information about where the spending's going, and I'm perfectly happy doing that, but if we don't hold their feet to the fire as a member of the League of Cities, who's going to hold their feet to the fire?
No, and I, I don't disagree. If we haven't gotten that information...
I would sign up if they give us the information.
Yes.
Thank you. I, I should correct. They, they did, in fact, provide that information to us, and, and Councilwoman Farazza may remember that there were some expenditures in there that were questioned at a board meeting as to the appropriateness of those expenditures, given the fact that the member cities of the organization have been making staff, that salary, that salaries had been reduced, and perhaps were staff bonuses to League of Cities staff, appropriate travel to meetings in other states, reimbursement for mileage from their executive director when the executive director received, receives a car allowance, and some other issues of that nature. At, at the meeting where those items were discussed, Councilwoman Farazza tried to have a productive discussion around those items, and unfortunately, the, the other members were not interested in having that, that conversation directed that those items are to be handled at the executive level, and, and were dismissed, which certainly gives staff concern that, that valuable tax dollars for our membership perhaps are not being managed appropriately. So, I, I do want to correct for the record, Councilman Iasi, we did get that information back, and certainly, you know, nothing to the extent of...
It wasn't nearly specific enough to what we asked for. They gave us broad, generic things, like they don't even know how to handle a receipt and keep receipts. I mean, it was just generically, "We went here, and we went there." And we don't, we don't let that, we don't let people do that here, and it's still our tax money.
No, and, and we should, and we should follow up, because Ms. Farazza did question those things, and they, they kind of blew her off, from what I remember, and I think we need to do that, but, and get answers to those questions, but I still don't think we should get out. Ms. Farazza?
Yeah, I think, one of the concerns that I have, Mr. Mayor, you know, we've been looking at cuts to our budget, even our training and travel here at the city of Reno, we've cut that substantially. I mean, when you have twenty-seven thousand dollars for two staff members and travel, I mean, even talking about purchasing a new car, I'm just going to lay it out there, I think the taxpayers should know, purchasing a new car for the executive director, there are a lot of questionable expenses in there. And if you look at the League of Cities, certainly, I'm a proponent, I was a member, Mr. Mayor, and board president, but I feel like I had a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers in the city of Reno to raise these issues at our board meeting. I will state as well that I think that some of the financial, I mean, this isn't the first time this has come up. There have been other members of the board who've brought things to the attention of this organization. I think, though, that, you know, you're looking at ninety percent of that organization being funded with taxpayer money. And I think to have twenty-seven thousand dollars at our last board meeting, I believe was described as no big deal. Well, that's our contribution as a dues-paying member. And I'll say for the record, Mr. Mayor, I think that the organization and the mission of the Nevada League of Cities is absolutely imperative, and I support the mission, but I certainly have some serious issues with some of the expenditures, and to be told that twenty-seven thousand dollars is no big deal, and to do travel and a car and everything else, when we're asking our employees to make cuts and everything else, I just find very inexcusable.
I don't disagree with you at all, and I think that we need, whoever's going to be our representative on that board, needs to bring these issues up and get answers for them, but I don't think we should get out of the association. Mr. Asher, you had something?
No, it's kind of a catch-22, so what do you do, Mr. Mayor? I mean, if they're not being responsive to these issues, which are important, then you don't give them the twenty-seven thousand dollars as a contribution, so...
And we're one of the largest contributors.
No, we're one of the big guys.
Yeah. I don't know, do you want to have staff approach them and see if we could do a membership or something less? I don't know, maybe that solves part of the problem.
Well, I think, I really think whatever our share is, that whoever's going to be the representative on the League of Cities should take these concerns and fight with... Oh, I know you have, I know you have, but...
Response, and actually, staff brought these things to my attention at the conference. Some of the expenditures there...
I remember.
And we...
Maybe we just ask David Fraser to come before our budget adoption and see if he can answer the questions?
Yeah.
Or have the, we'll request the chairman of the League of Cities to come.
What's our status on the conference of mayors? What's our status there? Are we a member of the conference of mayors?
No.
I don't believe we are.
No, I withdrew from the conference of mayors six years ago, probably, seven years ago, because...
Are we members of the National League?
We are not.
Thank you.
So, I think Dave has a good idea. Why don't we just ask the executive director to come before council, and they can make a decision at that point?
Probably better to have the chairman of their board come to...
Mr. Mayor, we'll request both.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, it sounds, I mean, just from what I'm hearing, it sounds like the board's kind of letting the executive director run the things there, so I think it'd be better to hear it from the executive director.
Yeah, I would too, I'd like to hear from you.
Yeah, but if the chairman wants to show up, I don't think that hurts either.
The president's Councilman Ross from the city of Las Vegas this year, so I think both, fine.
I have no problem sending a message to him.
I think we just did.
Yeah, I think we did. I hope they understood. All right, thank you, Mr. Klinger.
I'm still here, Mr. Mayor.
No, sir, I'm turning it back over to you now that I have to at least voice my opinion.
All right, thank you, sir. We'll move to the city attorney's office budget, and you can see from the slide, due to increased caseload, we have included in the recommended budget additional funding for both a part-time position as well as outside attorney services. And if the council has any questions, we do have, obviously, representatives here from the city attorney's office.
Mr. Asher?
I just have one, do we have someone in the budget this year to be trained to do our, I don't know what the title is, our land use work?
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office. Over since two thousand and eight to today, we went through thirty-six employees down to twenty-four and a half. We are still having backup attorneys. What we're doing in our office this year is actually looking at how we deliver service to the city of Reno, and we are doing a more collaborative analysis on how we can create teams with greater depth to provide service to the different areas. So we're working on that model, and we'll bring that back in this next budgetary year. But the answer to your question, right now, we have a primary and a backup, but that system will likely change in the next month on how we deliver services, because we want to present our office as a law office to the city, so that we have greater depth. And like, for example, if I'm on vacation for a day, there will be somebody that can respond, that has knowledge of an item going through the system. So we are doing our best with the limited resources we have to really provide top-notch coverage, legal services for the city.
Yeah, I wasn't questioning that, it's just that we legally are required to say that there's a shortage of this type for this one position, and I thought the law required that we hire someone to learn that position, and how long's that been now?
We have somebody in that position that's learning, and I think my date, I can give it to you exactly, but my memory is two thousand and nine, so the critical shortage position goes to the end of this coming fiscal year.
So when it comes up, that's what I'm going to have to know, because it's for three years, and I thought it was longer, we've been saying there's a critical shortage, but I just want to make sure, I thought the state law said that we're required to bring someone in to start training on that. So if we have someone in place?
We do, and we have. The state law doesn't have that specifics, but it's good management practice to have somebody come in, in a critical shortage area, to make sure that we have somebody trained, so that you provide appropriate legal services.
Okay, thank you.
And in addition, the outside legal services, so you're aware on that, that is city council's direction to go and hire a city council for the redevelopment agency lawsuit. Those funds may not be fully expended, but it will depend on whether or not that lawsuit goes to trial or goes to other matters, and we'll continue to manage those bills and make sure that we assist in any way we can in that litigation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next item is the risk management fund. You can see the, we've aligned our funding again and have implemented efficiencies in that office. Probably Jack Campbell could come up and elaborate on this and provide even more detail on what those efficiencies are.
Thank you very much, Jack Campbell, Risk Manager, for the record. One of the efficiencies that allowed us, we have streamlined the claims management system from being a multi-tiered situation to now that, we now handle claims that are directly related to the city by the attorney who will litigate the matter. And so, as the claims come in, I assess the liability exposure and resolve those claims, and if not, then the people that are making claims realize that they are going, that they're dealing with the individual that will defend the lawsuit if possible. And as a result of that streamline, we have reserved approximately one point five million dollars of our risk budget as of today. We are currently at about a five percent payout on this fiscal year, which is now approximately three quarters of the way through. Plus, we have, with Tracy Chase's assistance, we have come back and captured our insurance coverage and our exposure coverage, and streamlined the analysis of our insurance needs and requirements, and correlated that with our risk exposure. And now we see a very, we actually have more coverage, more risk coverage, and more coverage for our hard costs out there, such as our vehicles and property. And so, overall, the efficiency that we see in the current management position allows us to reduce that budget, plus more than adequately cover our risk exposure.
Mr. Mayor, the next budget before you is the municipal court, and what the budget includes for the municipal court is the realignment of their givebacks, as well as continued vacancy savings and efficiencies that the court has put in place.
Any questions?
That's great news.
All right, continue.
Mr. Mayor...
I ought to make her speak, just for the hell of it, but I'm not. I hate to think anybody gets off. Yes, go ahead.
I'm Cassandra Jackson, new court administrator for the Reno Municipal Court.
Thank you for being with us today.
Thank you.
Well, I think we ought to cut ten percent, Mr. Mayor, just to see what she can do.
Looks like we're having technical difficulties here.
I'm not running the computers, don't blame me.
You're not doing that, Mr. Mayor?
No, sir.
Next item before you is the city clerk's office, really the only significant item of interest to the council there, is actually a reduction, and that reduction is due to the fact that we now own the reprographics equipment, and what is included in the budget going forward is simply the maintenance costs, and that's why you see the thirty-seven percent reduction there in services and supplies. That's attributed to, I think it's lease payments that we no longer have to make for the equipment. Next is the civil service commission. Again, all that's included in the civil service commission budget before you today is just the realignments of givebacks for the civil service chief examiners. Those were not included in the original FY-12 adopted budget when it was adopted, and so those are the adjustments that you see there before you.
Yes, Mr. Asher?
On the realignment of givebacks for civil service chief examiner, could you go in a little bit more detail for that, Andrew? Is that just basically a pay reduction? I mean, is that a pay cut?
For the record, Kate Thomas, Director of Office Management and Budget. What we're looking at here is, because of the time of adoption of your budget last fiscal year, we weren't sure what those givebacks were going to look like when the employees came forward, and so in this case, originally, when the budget was submitted, it was taken out of salaries, and when the employee would then come back and say, "I'd prefer to have my car or my cell allowance," or whatnot, we went in and readjusted that salary and then took that out of the benefits, so that's what you're looking at in this case.
So, as I read this, does this look like a seven percent increase in salary, but a nine percent decrease in some other benefit?
And what you're seeing there in the benefits is, we went through the citywide and did a readjustment of the workers' compensation, and so, you know, the net of what occurred behind the scenes is that those things are not equal. So you're seeing what's occurred with the workers' compensation, and then the realignment of the givebacks, and that's the number that you're seeing, the seven and the nine.
Okay, all right.
Hope that helps.
Any other questions?
Next is the Community Development Department. The significant items included in the Community Development Department, you see there listed on the slide, I'll ask Bill Thomas, Assistant City Manager, to go through those items for you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, Bill Thomas, for the record, Assistant City Manager. The four points here, I just want to talk briefly about as far as the Community Development budget that have changed, starting with the planning temporary salary. The current staffing level that we have in the planning allows us to address the current planning or project review process, but we have a real difficult time addressing any kind of advanced planning or policy planning. So in other words, if an issue comes up in the planning process, we don't have the resources to be able to jump on quickly, those kind of advanced planning policy issues. So what we're asking is that we would set aside money for temporary and salaries. So basically, what we're talking about here is an internship, where we would work with the university to bring somebody in that could provide some capacity for the planning function, and that's the purpose for that request. The second item, business license overtime, is a situation we find ourselves in occasionally, primarily related to having to go out and check businesses that operate in non-traditional hours, in other words, the weekend, evenings, times like that. So that's why that money is being set aside, to be able to move the staff into those situations or provide the staff in those situations. The next item, business license automation, is a result of a couple of things. One of them is the efforts from the Shared Services Committee to look at the city of Sparks, the city of Reno, and Washoe County, perhaps, working together on a single licensing process. Also, the Secretary of State is a group we're working with too, to see if there's a way to make things simpler and streamline for businesses as far as getting licensed. The other thing that we're looking at is to try to get to the point where we can get licenses online, so people won't have to come into the city to get their business license. It's something they can do, similar to what you do when you re-register your automobile. So you can just take care of the business on the internet, you don't have to deal with a person. And then lastly, code enforcement, technology enhancements, those are some computer enhancements that'll allow us to be more efficient in code enforcement. Any questions?
Ms. Farazza?
Yeah, thanks, Bill. And Building Enterprise Committee, I don't think we had a quorum that day, but the feedback we got was positive on the proposed budget for what's being recommended here for council. Couple of questions, on the business portal, what, does our technology integrate with the Secretary of State's? Because I think that's really where we want to be going for the future, for business, having that one-stop shop of somebody being able to apply online and not having to go through all these different agencies to get a business license. I think that'll help tremendously streamline that process. And I know you touched on it, Bill, but do we have funding set aside to tie into that piece?
And I'll take that one, just because of that special hat that I used to wear. You're right, we are looking to move in the direction to incorporate the current city of Reno business licensing process with the Nevada Business Portal, but in order to do that, we have to have an automated process here at the city of Reno first, in order to tie into that system that they're developing at the Secretary of State's office. So the money that you see here, the seventy-five thousand dollars, will allow the city to become automated. One of the things that some of the other cities around the state are doing is pushing for renewals of business license to become the first automated piece, so that when you go to Secretary of State's one-stop-shop and check out, and they recognize through the address that you've submitted for your business, they ask you, because it's a wizard technology, "Would you like to add a city of Reno business license renewal?" Or, in the case that we're a little more advanced, "Would you like to apply for and receive your city of Reno business license?" You can put that in the shopping cart and check out as well. But in order for that to occur, this seventy-five thousand dollar first step has to happen.
And then, when are we looking at implementation of that, Kate? As far as, how long does staff think the automation will take?
The one thing I do want to say, as far as that number, that is an estimate, part of the struggle we're having right now is this issue of working with the other jurisdictions. When we get in these situations, everybody has technology, and everybody's a little different, so our plan would be to work with that group, maybe for another couple of months. If there doesn't seem to be any progress, then we will probably bring back to you a suggestion to move forward on our own. So it's hard to give you a timing answer right now, because we are working with the other jurisdictions. They all seem to indicate that they're, that it's an urgent issue, but, you know, their timeline may turn out not to be the same as ours.
Yeah, it'd be nice if we're first in the state to have it, bragging rights there. But on the seventy-five thousand, Kate, where does that get us? Do we know if we, and I understand that's only an estimate, if we're fully automated, how much the staff anticipate those costs would be to tie into the business portal?
And that's a really good question, because that is the cost, the unknown out there is, once we get a system built at the city of Reno, what is the nexus between the city and the state's program? And I know that there is some money at the state level in the Secretary of State's office to help build the arm that reaches out from the business portal that would connect then to the piece that comes out of the system that we have here. So I think those discussions are currently ongoing between, I know there's a really good dialogue between the folks that are doing business licensing here, and then the business portal administrator over at the Secretary of State's office. So we'll continue to make sure that we include funding sources for that, and that we don't, you know, we're not remiss in trying to figure out the fastest way to get. But the good news is, good news for us, Secretary of State's not listening, but is that the business portal project has been delayed a little bit, so it's not going to be launching till this summer, so that helps us in our preparations.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. All right.
The next item, which is the enterprise fund, you can see that what we're anticipating, based on the information we've heard from the community and the experience we're seeing, is essentially a flat next year. The trend over the last three years as far as building permit activity and building permit valuation has been relatively flat. The good thing is, we're not going down, but there's really no reason to anticipate a major, even though we all want to see a major surge from next year, so we've assumed the flat budget, and we've also kept our fees the same as they are. In other words, we haven't raised them based on CPI, thinking that from past discussions with the council, there is interest in making sure that our fees are in such a way that they wouldn't discourage new business. So we're going to leave those the same. In terms of enhancement and improvements, we do have the 2012 building code adoption scheduled for next year. I believe we're several years behind in terms of adopting a code, and also the other jurisdictions are looking at doing that, so one of the things we want to keep in mind is having consistent codes across jurisdictions, so when new businesses do come to town, they're not confused about what are the design parameters that our community uses. So that's where that money's programmed for. And then lastly, what we think is a really important efficiency and customer service improvement is to go to electronic plan checking, and what we intend there is to try to be in a position where individuals can submit their plans over the internet, get their plan reviews, and be able to, in fact, ultimately get their permits without ever having to come into the office. And we've had a very good response, particularly from the architectural industry, because there's a lot of money and time involved, for example, in setting off, in running off multiple sets of hard copies, bring them down to our office, we have to take those hard copies, we have to track them, keep them, move them around, and I think there's going to be a lot of efficiencies by implementing that kind of a program, which has been done in other communities, and we're studying that, so that's the purpose of that last item.
Yes, Mrs. Odr.
Mr. Manager, do we have adequate staffing either, you know, in either category? I mean, obviously, we're working with the community to grow our economy, you know, to come out of this with some sustainable and maybe more rapidly than, certainly more rapidly than we've experienced already. And as we improve, the demands are going to be first experienced in your department. And even in this more sluggish time, we've asked you to take on some things like the off-site and onsite signage and the TOD. Is there adequate staffing there? Or do we need to, do we need to recognize you may need some support for some external contracts, much like we're doing in the attorney's office?
I believe we have the staffing for the current demand for service. We would be hard-pressed if things did really pick up, to be able to keep up our performance measures that we've promoted. Basically, we're at, which is not dissimilar from other functions in the city, we're at the point where we're providing the core service, but it's, it would be tough if multiple people, for example, were out, because, as an example, we have two planners, so if one of them's gone, we're down 50%. But it is, we're at a level, and we believe for next year, assuming we don't see a huge increase in economic activity, we're at a position where we can provide the service.
Thank you.
Will we look at outsourcing plan checking and stuff?
We can certainly, and that is one of the things we'll look at if things do pick up. This electronic plan checking is a way to be much more efficient, so our capacity can increase without actually adding individuals, we think, because, you know, a lot of it is the little things that take up time. Like I said, moving a set of plans, you might think that, but when you're doing thousands of them, by the time you add that up, that's a lot of staff time moving paper around. So we think we can gain some efficiencies and increase some capacity by moving to an electronic format of receiving information. And another little thing is just scanning in the documents. Right now, we have to physically take the plans and somebody has to scan them in. Well, if we get everything electronically, we've removed that step totally, so there's a lot of efficiencies that can be achieved by doing that, and we're looking at, well, we're looking to that as well as the outside of things do pick up, of how we might be able to immediately address a need that would arise.
Any other questions? Mr. Klinger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next slide before you is the CDBG and home program within the community development department. Have no significant highlights to report to council, so if there are no questions, Mr. Mayor, we'll move to the next slide, which is finance. In the finance department, we have recommended in the budget an additional senior accountant position, as well as recognizing that our banking service charges are increasing for fiscal year 13, and those are reflected in the slide before you, and Mr. Chisel is here to answer any of your questions.
Any questions? Move on to the next. Wait a minute, okay.
On the fees, is that Bank of America, Andrew? Because don't we have a contract with them, because they give us our line of credit, correct?
Bank of America is our bank. I don't know if these fees are related to Bank of America.
Yes, they are. This is Robert Chisel, Finance Director. Part of the reason the fees are increasing, we are working with the bank, trying to review the fees to make sure they're correct and accurate, but one of the biggest causes is that as interest rates have declined dramatically, the offset we experience for interest earnings used to offset the fees, but because interest earnings are so very low at this point in time, they're not offsetting the fees, so our fee actually is increasing.
So I just want to clarify, so it's not the bank who's increasing the fees, it's our interest that is not covering the fees?
Correct.
So they're not raising the fees at all?
As we have not identified any fee increases from them, however, it's just a fact that the interest rates are so low, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Now we go to borrow money, that's a good thing, so.
Depends on which side of the equation.
Next slide is the sewer billing section within the finance department. The only significant issue to report here is the, is just the alignment of the workers' compensation and unemployment costs, which is why you see the change in the benefit costs there. It's really related to a citywide realignment of those benefit costs among departments.
I have a question on that one. On the sewer fees on an original CIP project, there was like almost $6 million for flood drainage projects, and that's been taken down to zero now. What kind of projects were those that we were looking at?
For the record, John Flansper, Public Works Director. Actually, we, staff did not identify anything for flood projects. We came back to OMB with our actual projects that we have for sewer, both of the treatment plant and the collection system. We did not have anything identified for flood projects, so they, those numbers were changed to reflect the actual projects that we have this year going forward.
So we don't have any flood or drainage projects?
Nothing from the City of Reno.
When we clean, because we have our agreement that we clean some of the ditches and stuff now, is that, that obviously must not be a flooded and drainage project, or maybe it's not even a sewer project?
Any of the agreements that we have for that work to occur comes as a service and supplies.
Okay, thank you.
Good. On the ditches in particular, do you know what that cost is right now, John, for the city?
I don't have the exact, the number, I can give you a range, so I will get that information and bring it back to you.
I mean, is that something that flood control could pick up legally from the standpoint of it is for flood protection, clearing that debris from those tributaries? We may be limited in the scope, because I think it's Truckee River, but I'd like that looked at.
Any other questions? Mr. Klinger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next slide is the budget for the fire department in fiscal 13. What is not reflected here, obviously, is the additional safer funds. So what you see here is the fire department post-deconsolidation without the federal funds and the salary and benefits costs associated with those additional 64 positions that were announced today. Once we get the final award, that will obviously be added to the budget.
Yes, Mr. Esch.
Where are we with funding the new station down south? Is that going to be in this coming fiscal year, or are we still short that 1.5 million?
We don't have anything included in the budget specifically for...
Would that be in a fire budget, or that just be in a general CIP from Public Works?
It would normally be under Fire Department. I think the reason we're not showing anything right now is the main revenue sources that we anticipate and have identified to build that station are agreements that we're going to have to work with other individuals on. So we, we're very comfortable the money's there, but until we get it in hand, a lot like a grant, we don't really want to put it in the budget.
From what I hear, we're still like 1.5 million short with all those agreements of cash to build it?
It really depends on where we land as far as the cost of the station. Potentially, we have identified enough revenue sources to cover our cost, but we may be short, and that's what we're working on. As soon as we have that answer, we'll be back to council. We may even have it by the 7th.
When do you think bids would go out then, to do that project?
Well, the scenario that we're looking at right now, in the discussions we've had with the property owner, where the station is intended to go is that it would be a lease purchase. So we actually wouldn't go out to bid on the project, we would have a lease agreement for the use of a station and a property that at some point in the future we may choose to buy.
So what's anticipated data, maybe instead of building it, opening, is it this fiscal year? I know we just leased a space so that we're covered down there. I'm just curious, should people be looking for this fiscal year or maybe next fiscal year to get that open?
I think we're looking for this fiscal, well, by 2013. I think the lease agreement is for one year, and our plan would be to have the station occupied within, right, before that lease expires.
Not the calendar year of 2013.
Right, fiscal year 2013.
Okay, great, good news.
Any other questions?
Just one last question on that. I mean, we do have kind of some, when you say you believe we have the funding bill, is that on the lease option? Because there, I think staff was exploring different financing mechanisms for that station, so.
What we've identified from other sources is the potential of up to $2.8 million, which is the money that would, the city would be able to provide without having to go to funding sources in turn.
So, and what's the staff's estimate to construct a station?
I'll let the fire chief speak to that.
For the record, Mike Hernandez, Reno Fire Chief, typically to erect and build a station from the ground up, you're looking at anywhere from an eight to about a 14-month timeline
I'm sorry, the cost, chief?
I'm sorry, the cost?
Yeah, the cost.
A typical three-bay station, you know, no frills is about three, between $3 million and $3.5 million.
So we do have a bit of a shortage from what we've identified?
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Mr. Klinger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next slide is the Human Resources Department. The significant items here are, as you're aware, the payroll outsourcing. We've also reduced the unemployment costs within the Human Resources Department, and again, that's just related to that realignment of those benefits across the city. We have included overtime in the department. This is for, again, implementation of the outsourcing project. The staff within the Human Resources Department are key for the transfer from this current system to the new system, and so we have included some overtime in their budget for that. The last piece that you see on the slide is $30,000 has been included for a wellness program. This is related to your health benefits, getting screenings and that sort of thing, because there's, as you see on the screen, for every dollar you invest in wellness, you potentially save $1.50 in healthcare costs down the road. So we have included $30,000 in the budget for wellness programs.
Any questions? Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next slide is the Reno Police Department. You can see the Reno Police Department budget is flat. We have included funding for the victim services position that were currently grant-funded. We have included funding for those out of the general fund, and I would ask Chief Pitts to come up and walk through the other items that you see on the slide.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. For the record, Honorable Mayor and Counsel, Steve Pitts, on behalf of the men and women of the Reno Police Department. The first really is programmatic in the sense that we are kind of leading or driving the revitalization project downtown, which we've termed as SURGE, so we're surging resources from various departments and community resources into that effort downtown. We've also taken the lead on the Midtown Project with respect to some things that Mr. Guston has asked, and obviously a warden in that area and in the community, and that's in its infancy, but we're moving forward. I've made a recommendation to my staff to examine a volunteer sworn reserve program, so it would be not similar to the paid reserve program, but we'd look for people that have left policing, that may want to return in a volunteer status, or people that have a post requirement already, they've already met a post requirement, and they can get into that program. Mrs. Odr asked last year for us to look at improving maybe our SAVE program and other volunteer services. We began working with the University of Nevada Reno to look at developing a youth volunteers and policing project, but they had many cuts up there, and so we've shifted that, ma'am, and council, to really looking at Upward Bound, which are two projects, one at the University of Nevada Reno and one at Truckee Meadows Community College, to bring in these youth volunteers in policing service. And really, it would be a great opportunity to develop young people in our community to get into public service or into the Reno Police Department if possible. As the manager pointed out, he has recommended, or OMB has recommended, the funding of the four victim services positions, or actually, actually five, and then we have tested four and will promote one commander probably within the next 30 days.
Chief, how sure are we on police officers?
Well, if I can have your permission, I'd like to make a couple of, preface my comments by, first of all, saying that we have all worked very hard in the last three or four years to keep this city going and keep it progressive, and I appreciate that. And I have to tell you, the work of the manager, Kate Thomas specifically, and OMB this year, has been impressive to me, and I want to congratulate them, and I want them to know that at the Reno Police Department, we appreciate it. Much like fire, we're running a 24/7 operation. Let me place your question in the context, Mr. Mayor, and I'll actually use a similar formula that the manager used in the beginning of his presentation, talk about workload, service, and safety. Our jurisdiction has doubled, really the size of the Reno Police Department is similar to what we were in about 1990, and our jurisdiction has doubled to 110 square miles. Our residents have increased from 138,000 to 220,000. Our calls for service, roughly between 145,000 and 150,000 a year, which is fairly significant, and depending on how you want to do the math, that's between 360 to 403 calls for service daily. The Bureau of Justice Statistics out of DOJ provided a report, actually, this council followed that for years until we had to make some tough decisions on RIFs, and they recommended that a department the size of the Reno Police Department with the service capacity needed, you needed 1.8 officers per 1,000 residents to service that community. The Reno Police Department today is at 1.3. As I had mentioned at the diocese a couple of weeks ago, which is dear to me and dear to the men and women in public safety, just not policing, is we've seen a 13% increase in officer fatalities over the last three years, and a 42% increase in felonious murders of police officers in the last year. I testified before a committee impaneled by the President and DOJ last week in Washington, and they were looking at these fatalities and what can we do to provide mitigation or intervention in these situations. There was a report written by the Department of Justice on fatigue and stress in policing. I took a look at some of those numbers when I got back to the Reno Police Department. We've seen some increases in sick time, and when you look at the total hours, really the money, excuse me, initially is about $800,000 we saw in 2010 in sick time, and it's about 1.2 now. I'll put this into perspective in just a minute. As far as hours worked, that's roughly 26,000, okay, where we saw previously last year, and now we're just over 30,000 hours lost to sick time. One thing we've seen at the Reno Police Department that's interesting is a reduction in officers volunteering for premium overtime, and this report specifically talks about when you see officer fatigue and stress when you see officer fatigue and stress, they will not volunteer for these premium assignments even when they're getting paid overtime for it. I don't have those numbers, and I apologize for that because I started to really take a hard look on Monday. The other thing that they recommend is you take a good look at your use of force incidents, you look at other things in the organization, and we did that. We haven't seen a spike in those things, but they're recommending that, you know, you keep your force strong. Obviously, the wellness program that Mr. Guston and counsel has supported us in Fire on has been huge, but it's only going to make a dent potentially in some of the impacts we could reach, which would be a loss of decision-making, increased potential for substance abuse, and risk management issues in policing. And then, of course, for me, which is very near and dear for being in the profession for over three decades, is not burying police officers. So, I hope that puts that in perspective, sir.
Ms. Srazza.
Yeah, Chief, last year, and we had come to terms with the RPPA, I mean, again, just like Fire, they had given up quite a bit in concessions, and we went to contract with them. Where did that money go there, give back? Because I thought part of the understanding with that give back is that we're going to hire more officers with the funding that, I mean, that was the idea, was that we could keep the department intact and bring back officers, and I forgot what the amount of that give back was. Maybe the manager can help my recollection here, but it's quite substantial.
Councilwoman Srazza, I don't remember the number off the top of my head, perhaps Renee, actually.
Renee Rangers, Director of Human Resources, Councilmember Srazza. The give-back concessions that the RPPA and the RPSAE gave were actually in the timeframe between January of 2011 and June 30th of 2011. It was to bring back some potential positions, and I believe there were about 10. And that was to carry them through the fiscal year, because that was what we identified in the layoff.
Okay, but what, they're giving additional, we have, under, when's our current contract expire?
The current contracts expire June 30th of 2013.
So, and didn't they give give backs this fiscal year as well? So, where are those give backs going?
I don't know exactly where those give backs are going. Perhaps the budget staff can answer those questions, but we retained those officers after June 30th of 2011.
Yeah, Councilwoman, in speaking to the chief, we did hire back, once the council approved that agreement, we did hire back vacant positions at that time. I think the chief said it was eight positions, and obviously, those positions carry forward in the budget as being funded, so any cost savings that you have from the agreement, you know, you have an offset there with those positions carrying forward. Now, just to clarify, I mean, they weren't new positions, they were positions that were being held vacant for cost savings that, once the agreement was put into place, were hired. So, they weren't additions to the Reno Police Department, but they were allowed to fill vacant positions.
So, they were, but they weren't, kind of semantics. So, Chief, you're asking for another, you believe another eight would be...
Again, let me place it into context. If you take 1.8, which you have used before, I think that's unreasonable because you would increase us by 92 positions. So, what I did is I worked with the staff to look at a reasonable request, which was eight police officers for, obviously, this budget year, and that's what I requested. Yes, ma'am.
And then, what about the cops funding? Didn't we get some cops funding a couple of years ago? Is that going to expire?
That will expire, and I believe it's 2014. And that is a three-year grant, and that was for 10 police officer positions.
And is there any other cops funding available?
There has not been, ma'am. Really, what they did with the cops funding, and we can have Bridget get up here, because she's kind of the expert if necessary, but if you were previously awarded grants, you weren't in line to get any follow-up cops more grant money, so...
And those rules haven't changed at all?
No, ma'am, and I have to tell you...
Things are constantly evolving back there, so...
And they are, and you know, the whole political horizon with respect to that situation in policing in America.
Yep.
You know, we have been treated very, very well by the Democratic side of the party with policing efforts and programs in our communities, and so right now, really, there's not much going on for us in policing.
Did we get, has staff had the opportunity to check what grants are available? Have we explored all those options, Chief?
I can tell you...
I'm assuming we have, because you guys have done a very good job of getting equipment, the cops funding, everything else.
I could tell you that Bridget Pincalini, our fiscal manager, and Michelle Gitmed are online every day networking for grants.
And then, how much would it cost in the first fiscal year for the eight additional?
It's roughly about $800,000, about 100 salary and benefits per officer.
How many do you expect to retire over the next couple of years?
Again, to place it into context, in '09, '10, and '10, '11, we saw mass exodus, at least, of the Reno Police Department, some 60 or more retirements, which saved many of those younger officers' jobs. We talked about that in here, I believe, last year. We're projecting maybe two or three a year because of that significant exodus in the last year and a half.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Zadrin and Mr. Guston.
First of all, Chief, congratulations. You made reference to the group that you were just speaking in front of last week, and I understand that that happens frequently, that you're asked to go and speak on topics that you've just become such a recognized leader in providing, so congratulations.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for representing us so well in front of the nation, not just us.
Thank you.
And you are in a very challenging time, and I'm really trying to understand, last year during the budget cycle, kind of back to the earlier part of this conversation, I thought I remembered, actually, I thought it was around 14 officers that you thought we were going to be able to bring in in the fall of last year. So, is that the eight that you described that you...
Let me, yes, ma'am, yeah, that's, you're right on point. It was 13 that we had lost in the RIF, and the agreement after the contractual negotiations was, as the manager and OMB said, we could fill those positions, we would. We're reaching that 13 right now. Those positions, as Mr. Klinger said, had remained open, so we hired eight of those young men and women back, and we just brought back the remaining 13. In fact, they start on Monday.
And now, the eight that we're kind of generally talking about that we really need, is that adequate in terms of the cuts that other departments are taking, in particular, the Sheriff's Department, and the impacts and overflow that your officers in your department may be expected to kind of recover? As the county cuts its operation, will we need to try and help them, you know, help the community recover from the service that they're not going to be able to provide? Is that really adequate? Is the eight adequate if we're going to be in search of how to, you know, better, how to provide better public safety? Is that enough?
It's an excellent question, ma'am. Actually, I believe Ms. Srazza or Mr. Oz, he asked at the retreat, Steve, could you look at maybe calls for services or policing incidents in and around areas annexed? And I actually did that, and I used that calculation in the eight, and let me just kind of go over it briefly. We know that we've annexed about 13, let's say, geographical areas in the last seven or eight years. I'm sorry, I don't remember the exact timeline, but within that, we have increased our calls for service annually in and around those areas, on the borders and the sphere of influence, if you want to use that term. Again, I'm not an engineer, just about 2,100 calls for service a year. And then, when you look at a formula that we've used for 20 years at the Reno Police Department, which allows for 30% time for problem-solving and crime-fighting, doing proactive police work, and then 55 minutes roughly for every call for service, that's 5.4 officers, ma'am. Does that kind of answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Guston.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It just, I guess, just the discussion that's gone on, to shed a little more light on it, you kind of went across it quite quickly, and it do, and I think it's your way of doing more with less in how you approach things, but when you talk about your need of 1.8 officers per thousand versus 1.3, did you say that is a difference of about 92 officers?
Yes, sir, I did.
So, from 1990 to now, the population growth of, quick calculation, 65% or so during that period of time, to service it at the level we did in 1990, we would be looking, and I know we're trying to get every officer we can talk about here somewhere between 8 and 13, but the real number is 92?
Well, my professional opinion is, I'd love to stand up here and have you approve 92 police officers. I know that's not going to happen, Mr. Dorch, thank you. And so, what I did is I tried to conduct an analysis that provided a number, obviously, to OMB and in this discussion today, that I felt was reasonable, it was a reasonable beginning, and roughly eight to 10 officers. Mr. Guston, I think we could get started, and hopefully, if things do improve, then we'll continue to maybe add to that or decrease that 92 number down. But you're not going to get to 1.8 right now, and we know that. And the other thing, I know you know this, but I have to remind you that the men and women of the Reno Police Department, smaller, leaner, incredibly committed force, and the department in 1990, no offense to those that might be watching, I was here, couldn't hang with these men and women for five minutes. So, it's a different police department, if that makes sense, sir.
And that's positive, and I won't belabor the point. I understand that, but when I first was elected to council eight years ago, we were putting on eight to 10 officers a year. We looked at doing that, and it's unfortunate we cannot get back to that budget scenario, but I understand you're doing more with less, but I just want to shed more light on the fact that you kind of skipped over those numbers from 1990 to now.
Yes, sir.
And the real number, the hard number, would be 92, even though you can more efficiently through the leadership that you and your deputies chiefs have established, you're doing things better with fewer people, but really, you have a lot fewer people, and we're all excited and elated about the fact that we had 64 safer grants that are in the mix right now to come forward, and it's just a shame, the cops program, as Councilwoman Srazza and others have said, has not kept pace with that because we need that as well. So, I'll leave it with that, but thank you for the continued effort that you and your department put forward to try to keep this city as safe as possible.
Thank you, sir. It's a pleasure.
Excuse me, Ms. Zadrin, you must have stuttered. Go ahead, you had another question?
I did have another question for you, Chief. The volunteer sworn reserve program?
Yes, ma'am.
What will they be able, what kinds of duties and authority will they be able to perform and where?
Well, what they'll do, ma'am, and counsel, is they will have to be approved by the Peace Officer Standards and Training in the state of Nevada to work in a status where they, with a sworn full-time police officer. And so, if we can build a significant force of volunteer sworn officers, we can put them with sworn officers in our SURGE operations downtown, in Midtown, really, anywhere in the community, if it's even neighborhood patrolling and dealing with calls for service. But they'll have to be with a sworn full-time police officer.
And we won't have the restrictions that we did with our paid reserves a few years ago, where they had to be just downtown.
No, ma'am.
We won't have those restrictions.
No, ma'am.
That's a great program, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Heskey.
That was going to be one of my questions. So, even with this volunteer group, they would have to be accompanied by a Reno police officer?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so is it one-for-one, or is there two volunteered, or is there, I mean, can two volunteers go with one sworn police officer?
It's a one-for-one, sir.
It's a one-for-one.
So, if I was a volunteer and I was working with you, you're the sworn officer, so it's a one-to-one relationship.
So, and then, on the additional eight police officers, where would you put them? Would they be in patrol?
They're going to patrol, sir.
So, what, that means more arrests, right, potentially?
Well, actually, the strategy that you approved in 2010, and I don't want, I know we've got a lot to talk about, has been highly effective in crime-fighting and problem-solving, and that's what they'd be focused on.
Right.
So, you may see an increase in arrests, or you may see a decrease based on problem-solving efforts.
Right. And then, would they be out writing tickets, for example, for speeding?
Yes, sir.
In your analysis, was there any projected revenue that would come in as the additional eight officers?
I haven't projected that with a relationship to revenues with ticket writing. Really, we looked at crime-fighting and problem-solving, and putting them in the street, obviously working in neighborhoods, but you would probably see an increase in citations, definitely, sir.
Any idea of what that offset would be to offset the 800?
I do not. Let me ask Bridget, do you know? She does not know. I can get that for you, though.
Okay, and then, what about CSOs? In the past, we've kind of tried to balance the additional police officers with CSOs. Is there any advantage there?
We love our CSOs, they do a great job. The problem is, is they don't do police work, they don't work 24/7.
Right.
And with the high volume of the things and the diversity of the work that needs to be done out in our community, it's tough for CSOs to do all that. At one time, when we were, you know, fat and happy, I mean, we had several CSOs, and they handled about 50 or 60% of the field reports and online reports.
Right.
But my recommendation would be to hire police officers.
Okay, and then, my last question would be, can you, could you maybe show us what those outcomes would be? Obviously, potential ticket revenue to offset the costs, obviously, if they're out doing community policing, that improves the safety of the neighborhoods, et cetera, maybe some, attach some outcomes to that?
Sure.
Because that, to me, would be important.
Well, I think after listening to this, Mr. Klinger and Chief, I think that after listening to everybody here, and I'm in agreement, I think we need to look and see how we can increase these eight police officers, and I think you and staff need to go back and see if there's some way we can come up and fund these eight police officers.
Mr. Mayor, we can do that. One of the items, if you'll remember, from at the beginning of my presentation, is that our contingency account balance has gone up from 2.2 to 2.8. We could certainly look at reducing that contingency to 2 million. That would give us 2 million in contingency plus our 4% ending fund balance, so, I mean, those are some of the things that we can look at.
Well, why don't you look at those and see, and then y'all come back and work. Mr. Heskey?
If, the past, I would imagine, Chief, if you get the authorization for the eight, they have to be trained up through the academy, right? And then, there's a timeline before those officers actually come online?
Excuse me, Mr. Manager, yes, sir, that's correct, and we already have that framework in place, depending on the decision made by council, or if council decides to do it incrementally.
Right, I was going to say, that's another option that we've looked at, so it doesn't necessarily mean that it's 800,000 immediate hit to the budget. It could be basically phased in, so you get the, you ultimately get the eight.
Yes.
Mr. Dorch.
Yeah, Chief, we had talked some about bringing back the reserve program.
Yes, sir.
And obviously, I mean, funding is an issue with that. Is there any mix on this, where we would have, you know, maybe bring back some of the reserve officers for downtown and additional officers full-time, or is this the need right now, this primarily?
Well, these are professional full-time police officers, and so, that's important when you look at the dynamics of a culture, especially in policing, and what the CEO or what council directs that you want done. They're a little bit more engaged, they understand exactly what needs to be done. What we did is we created a foundation, an RPD foundation, about three months ago, Mr. Dorch, to take basically donations legitimately for certain programs like victim services or a paid reserve program. And Mr. Klinger, myself, and Mr. Chisel presented at a local group about, what, three or four months ago, and actually, we got some attention to providing some donations to that foundation, and I've asked to return to that group because I have some numbers and some things I'd like to share with them, so we haven't lost this idea. I want to make sure that the council and you understand that. And so, when I get the chance to meet with those men and women, I'll definitely present, really, I want to talk about the victim services program, which is huge, and funding them, and then the potential for a reserve program.
And in the past, when we've hired officers, we always hired them in groups of six. It was, what, five officers and a sergeant or something?
Well, usually what happens, you're right, Mr. Dorch, what happens is, because you're looking at placing them into a training setting, right, which is, in this case, we'd send these eight or the first four to an academy, they get out of an academy, go into field training, but if we go all the way back to Mr. McNeely's era, and even some of, after he left, there was 2% in our budget that we were allowed to use for hiring police officers, and that basically worked out to about, I think, eight or 10 a year. I think that's what Mrs. Audra was talking about briefly, so...
I was trying to get you up to 12, Chief, is where I was trying to...
I was just going to say, between eight and 12.
Sir, I'd love to get to 12, my boss is right here, so I can tell he's already a little bit upset.
That was a good move, Councilman. I think we're all in agreement, but at least get the eight or six or whatever we'd need, but we need to get those, and if we could run it up to 12, it'd be wonderful.
Well, and, you know, maybe, I'm not even suggesting this for the immediate, this fiscal year and maybe even next, but as we continue to develop Midtown, there may be an opportunity to create a tax district in that area, much like we have for downtown. Right now, they're just struggling one-man, family kinds of operations, so, again, I'm not suggesting it currently, but as we begin to really develop that area and give it a better infrastructure... but as we begin to really develop that area and give it a better infrastructure, they might be able to help support a police district there as well.
You're exactly right, in fact, we philosophized with Steve Hardisty about that. But we have put a lot of efforts, I think Mr. Guston is familiar, policing efforts in that area in the last couple of months, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Ms. Sefrazza?
Yeah, one more question, Chief, just getting back, because I want to make sure your answer on the reserve program, because it, I mean, you are talking about professional officers, and I believe part of the, I just want to clarify, our contract too, is, part of those negotiations was we wouldn't be essentially using reserve positions to fill professional police officer positions. I believe we're under, the current contract has that language in there, is that correct?
No, that was, council actually agreed to that in the contract, but the thing is, is as someone pointed out earlier, I can put a reserve police officer anywhere in any neighborhood in the city. And we can have them working hand-in-hand with sworn, full-time officers, doing really good police work. And I think it's, it could work, it would work perfectly fine.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're not taking the, using the reserves to supplement professional police officers, so, and I thought that was part of the contractual agreement that we had with both of our units.
Yes.
That we agreed upon.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good luck with your boss on the eight to twelve, it sounds good for you, I think you got your work cut out for you.
He'll be calling me up to the fifteen floor later. Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. I think you got some good directions out of that, Mr. Klinger.
I did, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Azzi, take over a minute.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, we're moved to Parks and Rec, and I'll have Julie come up and speak to these items. You can see we have included in the budget increased funding, seventy-five thousand for senior services, and then some other items that I'll let Julie go into in more detail.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, and the Chair, excuse me, the City Manager. For the record, my name is Julie Conway, Director for the Parks Recreation Community Services. And what I'd like to go over are these items, these five bullets in front of you. As was mentioned, the Gulf has moved to the general fund after, in conversation with the Office of Management and Budget. The senior services, based on council direction, through their February process of identifying the priorities, has been increased by seventy-five thousand. And if I may, I'd like to just give you an overview of what that would provide for seniors. What we would do is expand the Neil Road Recreation hours to open on Saturdays, and purchase additional equipment there to enhance the programs for the seniors, and also promote the revenue generation at the center. We would also expand the Paradise Park Community Center programming Monday through Friday. We do have the facility open, but the programming there is lacking based on what we have had to cut in the past, and therefore, the seniors have not been able to avail themselves of that. We would also recommend to the City Council that we provide funding to the Senior Citizen Advisory Board, and they, like the Youth City Council, provide funding and other, some of the other boards and commissions and NABs, they provide special funding for special events to support the seniors in the community and community projects, such as the Farmers Market Coupon Program and other items that the senior citizens may identify as priorities. I'm happy to give you what they've done in the past, as far as activities they have provided. And then finally, also provide additional senior scholarship program assistance. We've tracked the senior scholarship program, as well as for all of our scholarships, and we're noticing that the seniors have asked for additional assistance. We go through a very rigorous process, through, when they ask for assistance, they have to show need, and they also have to contribute to payment of the program, so it's not just a hundred percent. We provide funding at a certain percentage, so that's what we would recommend to City Council, is the seventy-five thousand. The Eernet radio rebanding, this is a requirement, it's a one-time expense that we're requesting, the ten thousand five hundred, it is required by the FCC, and this, the Eernet is for our irrigation in the park operations, again, that's a one-time expense. And the alarm system, the Beaumont, we're calling it the Beaumont Park because we already have a North Gate Park, so until we go through a formal process of renaming it, we're temporarily calling it Beaumont Park. That is an ongoing expense of thirty-two hundred dollars for the alarm system for the building. And then we're recommending to City Council that we return some money to Reno Youth City Council for the good work that they do in the community, this is a council that you appoint, and this funding would go towards helping local nonprofit agencies and community-oriented and youth-oriented specifically projects, such as, they have sponsored in the program, the Kids Care Fun Fair, and that particular event draws out lots of youth. It helps youth get involved, engaged, and has been a very, very successful event. That has not been able to be put on in the past few years because that money was cut from the budget when we were reducing our services. And then this money would also support the council's activities to promote, they have a new idea that they've come up with to promote healthy and youth and academic events, working with the Washoe County School District and UNR. So they want to put on a new event, however, they came up with this, this last year, but they don't have any money to do it, to help sponsor that. So this, this is the budget at this time, and I am here to respond or clarify any item for you at this time.
Any questions? Pierre?
Could you break down the, excuse me, the seventy-five thousand on the senior side? So how much money would be going to the Senior Advisory Board, so that they would?
We're recommending ten thousand dollars would go to them.
And then how about for senior scholarship program?
That would also be ten thousand.
So the balance would then go to expand the hours of Neil Road and Paradise Park?
That's right.
And then you also indicated buying some equipment for Neil Road? What would that be?
That would be, what's happened at Neil Road is because of its overwhelming success, we, and we're very excited about that, we don't have the appropriate video equipment and some of the audio equipment that, and also there's, what we'd like to do is to bring in some equipment that would allow the seniors to have activities there, and we feel that this audio and video equipment would help us be able to rent it out more, like we do our other facilities, like, for example, Evelyn Mount, Neil Road, the Tuscadora Room, we have some equipment there that is pretty sophisticated, so we're able to rent that room out. So that's, that's what we're looking at as far as equipment for that facility, and then we're looking at, I believe, some audio equipment for Paradise as well.
And then, is that just expanding the hours, or is program money included in the seventy-five?
For Paradise or overall?
For both.
Yes, it would include additional programming.
Okay.
Yes, and that's one of the reasons why we are very anxious and would recommend this, because we would have the ability to have programs as well as just have the center open. Which, one of the things, we've got a great partnership right now with pickleball, and if you've not been out there and seen that pickleball activity, they are currently at indoor at the Neil Road site, and we've worked with them. That group is interested in supporting, developing some courts outside and promoting the program inside as well on Saturdays. And so we want to work with them, they're helping, they want to help us raise some funds. And so we're working with them, along with Park Operations, and Darrell Feimster are working together to see how those two things can work together. It's a very active sport that can get our seniors involved. We have nurtured that group at Neil Road inside the building for the last eighteen months, and they now have gotten so large that they want to move outside during the summer months. So having, being able to move inside during the winter months would really help us.
Okay.
Any other questions? Jessica, go ahead.
Julie, on the, do we have any information from the county? One of the concerns there, too, and is the Reno Housing Authority Board, was the Meals on Wheels program, specifically at Neil Road and the Silverada, and I was at the Neil Road Center with seniors the other day, and concerned about those programs and what's going on over there. I know it has nothing to do with our function, but it certainly has an impact, and those meals are served at Paradise as well, so.
We're tracking it with Grady and also with the Food Bank, I can't give you an exact answer today. Some of it's a lot of uncertainty as to whether there's going to be sufficient funds there. The funding that the City Council gave us that was received, that helped us put in a warming kitchen in the back of Neil Road, that's what really turned that facility around to be able to provide meals there, has done tremendous outreach and support. So I cannot tell you right now where that's going, I'll do some additional research before Monday's meeting. There is some uncertainty about the funding of it, and we're, we're trying to find out and make sure that we don't lose it. We have a very strong relationship with the Food Bank and with the county senior services, and we, we work to maintain that, I'll tell you, because they, the event that was held the other day was just incredible. And we had two hundred and sixty-eight meals served, this was the biggest event ever for the opening of the Older Adults Month and Senior Games, and Senior Games is going on. So we're providing a tremendous service out there that has grown, and I will get back to you.
What are the numbers out of Neil Road specifically, do you know how many we serve on the meals, on an average daily basis, Julie?
For youth and adults?
Yes.
Yes, I don't have that committed to memory, let me ask whether Darrell Feimster has that, he is responsible for that facility, he may have that committed to memory, if I may.
Darrell Feimster, Youth and Senior Services, City of Reno. We are currently serving between twenty and thirty seniors lunch there a day, and between seventy-five and a hundred youth dinner there each night.
And then, Darrell, are they mainly coming from their surrounding area, or are they coming from all across the city, do we have that information?
The senior population is, comes from a much wider area than the youth population. The youth population is a walk-in youth, but the senior population, I would say eighty percent of those individuals drive in from somewhere.
Do we have the numbers for Paradise and Silverada?
We actually do not serve meals at Paradise, and what we do do is...
I'm sorry, Silverada.
Yeah, I'm not, no, that's not our facility, but I do, they do serve meals in the Silverada Center, the housing facility there, but I'm not familiar with how many meals they serve.
What about the Ninth Street location, Darrell?
Ninth Street is their largest location, and I believe they serve closer to two hundred lunches a day.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilor Ms. Zadra?
Julie, you know, out of all the criticisms and lickens that I've received in, at my time here at council, the one that still stings comes from seniors when we had to eliminate such things as Bridge over at Paradise. Are we talking about bringing those kinds of services back?
Right, what we did this year is, we knew council wanted to have some presence at Paradise for this last, for fiscal year eleven, twelve. So what we did was to work with the volunteer groups out there and allow them to at least have the ability to open up the facility, and then staff would monitor it periodically. So that's what we did because we knew that it was so important. So having, having the ability to have the site open and having staff there will allow us to provide the programs like Bridge or others that they might want to have there. I want to also take this opportunity to let council know that, that we developed a relationship with, and Evelyn Mount Food Outreach came to us this last November, asking for some support for outreach for food, her food giveaway program. And so we opened up Paradise for Christmas for her, and she had a very large crowd there. And then on every Friday, she was, she's able to come and do some giveaway of foods, food as well. Then we have a bread drop that we do at Paradise Now. So the building is not closed, it's just not used to its fullest potential, and, and having some of this funding will allow us to do that, based on the City Council's goal direction.
I'm very happy to hear that, as I said, some of those lashings from ninety, they had to be ninety to ninety-five-year-old women, four of them who caught me at a coffee shop a couple of years ago. I hope they're hearing this.
Are you still working with Evelyn Mount, because she's gonna have to give up her program and move. She needs to move out of that neighborhood, and at Paradise, just moving food up there for Fridays and stuff, is there a way that we can move in there and set up and still be able to handle those food and things for all those people over there?
Well, we, we went out there, including myself, went out there with her and her advisors and looked at the site. The site is not for a permanent location for her to move to, it's not big enough site, it doesn't have the appropriate space for the freezers and all the rest of it that it needs for a permanent location. I know that she has talked to the Project Solutions to see if the Sabian Center could be a location, because they have room there.
How far is that from this location?
That is quite a ways, that's down on...
That's the problem.
Exactly, however, I know that they've looked there, that's why we offered to do something during Christmas and then every Friday. But the site, she felt the site and her advisors felt that site wasn't big enough for a permanent location. Because of the, because of the freezers and the food storage and...
Well, the freezer's outside, so anyway, I'm gonna look into it again, because that's the ideal location, if we can do that, and she serves food. She gives out food to hundreds of people every day, and we've got to get her out of that neighborhood.
Mr. Mayor, have they looked at the Salvation Army, you know, just a couple of yards down on Sutro? Because they do their bread drop thing every day as well, and I don't know if they do meals.
This is more than bread, she gives out food.
But that's my point, is they are already set up there at the Salvation Army.
No, she can look at that.
Yeah.
But we need to help her find, excuse me, Mr. Azzi.
So Ms. Conway, so we're not looking at cutting any programs?
No.
Okay, and on the seventy-five thousand, you're, what you're asking it to go toward, did that go to the senior services to sort of look at that, the senior advisory board to sort of say, get their buy-off, and this is where we need to take these things?
Yes, especially the, if council agrees with the allocation, we're recommending ten thousand for them to...
I want to know, did they look at the allocation of the seventy-five to say we should expand Neil Road and we should do these things?
We could certainly do that, this is what we've heard from them in the past, we can take it back to them and let them look at it and absolutely say, you know, this is what we're thinking about.
And how sure are we now that the county is going to continue to fund that two hundred and eighty thousand dollars that they needed? I mean, are we sort of, right now, I'm sort of ninety-nine percent they're gonna fund it, they told us all they were? But I think we have to keep that in mind, that if they don't, I think we're willing to figure that out here.
Yeah, and Julie's right, it'll go back to the advisory board, once it kind of was vetted here, Dave, so, yeah, and I don't know what, what's gonna happen. I'm like you, I think the county's moving in that direction, so they'll, that two hundred and forty thousand, I think it was, is not gonna get cut.
Councilor Azzi, that's my understanding as well, and, you know, there is uncertainty, as I shared regarding Councilor Sefrazza's question, but we're tracking it.
Great, good news. Okay, Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I would ask at this point if you would like to break for lunch, or if you would like to continue, it's twelve-thirty at this point.
Why don't we do these, let's do these, there's only two left, Mr. Mayor, and then we can quit on B-three?
We can get through the rest of the department budgets and then break right before we do the CIPs, if, okay. With that, then I'll have John Flansburgh come up and go through the Public Works slides.
For the record, John Flansburgh, Director of Public Works. On the, on these slides, you really have to take a look at Public Works, this is the general fund slide, we have a street fund and the sewer fund. But what you'll see here is a reduction in, in the salaries and benefits, those are positions that we've actually moved over to either street or sewer. What happened in the past is the Capital Projects Group... What happened in the past is the Capital Projects Group was charged to general fund. But even though primarily the individuals were working on either street or sewer projects, well, actually, street projects, they were charged to general fund and then there was another transfer that had to take place. Rather than doing that transfer, when it's the rule, we felt it was better to actually move the people to the fund that they're actually doing their workout for the year. So you'll notice that even though there's a reduction here, there's an increase in the street fund. We also are taking some of the individuals that were working in street fund and moving them to the sewer fund because we're going to be doing a higher capital program in the sewer fund in the next several years. So those are the differences that you see here. You do see the increase in services and supplies. Primarily, that increase is from a risk assessment, which could be spoken to by OOMB. On the next slide with the street fund, one of the things that we are looking at is aligning the... A fund for the infrastructure. And this goes back to the thought of right-of-way management, where we have some revenues that come in from, say, the revenues that come in from the In-Lu fee and sewer or right-of-way toll from water coming into the street fund, and the expenditures would go out of street fund. And things that they would pay for that currently are in the general fund are things like our street light or traffic signal light power bill, which is shown here. And that's incremental change here to show that going into the street fund. And finally, in the sewer fund, again, it shows that alignment with a little bit of an increase in salary and benefits there for those individuals that will be working on the sewer capital side. On the services and supplies, we had increase. Again, it talks about the workers' comp and OPEB cost increases. We also had a slight increase in TUMWORF. We overcut TUMWORF. We felt like the Joint Coordinating Committee made a recommendation for their budget going forward that had an increase. And that increase is also part of that 9% in services and supplies. And finally, in Public Works, we have the fleet. And in the fleet, we are just recommending an increase from 1 million to 2 million in the deferred... In the vehicle replacement. As you know, the last several years, we've reduced that down to what would be in a normalized effort around a 3, 3.5 million replacement schedule. We've reduced that down to less than a million. Up until last year, went to a million. And now we're recommending 2 million going forward. We are, in the past three years, four years, we've only replaced public safety vehicles primarily. And this year, we will actually start having a few other vehicles that need to be replaced. We have a couple trucks and plows that are in need of replacement that are included in that budget figure. And then in services and supplies, there's a part of that increase is due to a fuel increase that we... That we budgeted last year, $2.90 a gallon. And we're anticipating, obviously, what we're paying today being higher and increasing the fuel cost for that amount.
Only 5%? I mean, fuel's like four bucks now. So how do you only increase it 5%?
Again, looking at... We had reduced gallonage, but the price that we used last year, and I said 2.90, but I think it was 3.90. 3.90 was last year. But just looking at what we have spent already in this current year, not knowing what the cycle is going to be, doing a 5% increase from that.
So do we contract out for that for a year, for 3.90, or do we just sort of pay market price?
We pay market price.
So that's just a guess about what it's going to average out over the...
That is correct.
So we don't buy volume? I mean, we don't buy...
We don't speculate.
Okay, we don't buy...
On the... No, we...
Future... You don't buy futures?
We do not buy futures.
Okay.
How many of the cars we're going to buy? Are we looking at moving to CNG on some... I know we can't with the public safety and the snow plows, but some of the other ones? Because that fuel, they're saying for years, is going to be a stable price.
We definitely will be looking at that and looking at that in some of our larger vehicles. Obviously, before you... In the past, Waste Management has talked about converting their entire fleet over and building a station that would be for public use. That would be a big part of us going to a CNG if we had a location where we could actually fill...
Well, we've started that conversation with RTC to see if they have a CNG station over there by Sutro to see if they would allow other entities to use that.
They do. We have actually had some conversations with them in the past about using that. They have been not... They have not... I think it's something you could probably work out when you start getting into a larger fleet, but they have not been... Not favorable to that in the past.
I know they haven't, but the board's been favorable to making them open that up, at least until there's some private sector people out there to do it. I mean, we understand that we don't want to be in competition, but there's no private sector out there doing that.
We agree with you on the CNG. We think that is a strategic move that we should be making with some of our vehicles that would align to that.
Great. It's going to be wonderful.
Ms. Frazza?
Yeah, and John, just... We had the police presentation earlier, and we had the discussion of the franchise fee last council meeting. And staff had recommended that going towards streets. Couple follow-up questions on that end. Because I believe the staff proposal was from 3% to 5%.
Correct.
How much does 1% bring in? Is that 450,000?
Yeah, about 450,000.
So, and then I thought there was a cap on how much the city council could raise in the franchise all at one time.
There isn't a cap in the franchise. It just has a cap of 5% being the total amount that you can...
But I thought the increase... I thought you could only increase it a certain amount per year. I mean... Oh, it is? It's 2%?
Okay. I'm being told electric and gas supplies, but not... It's not in the right way.
Okay, so it's different than for TUMWA? And then did staff evaluate... I mean, because our street fund, I mean, we've done pretty well there, I think, with RTC and the street maintenance and everything, is potentially using... Looking at using that for... To fund public safety?
So on this discussion, we had a little later in the presentation, but we can just go through a couple of slides here. The recommendation that we had was the 900,000 a year going to the street fund. What we're looking at in that is... If we can go to the next slide, please? Okay. It's the very end of the presentation, I guess. Sorry. All right. It's the graphs at the very end of the entire presentation. All right. So this is the funding that we have had the last few years. The projected funding going forward is only going to be $2 million a year. When this was brought to you for the Accelerated Neighborhood Street Program back in 2007, it was anticipated that we'd have around 6 million a year to spend in these years. The reduction in the property tax override has actually is 4 to 4.5 million dollars a year. And so that is why we're going to be down about a $2 million capital spending going forward, which is one of the reasons we recommended going to the street fund. Next slide, please? Well, go ahead. The pie chart's fine. So the green is excellent. The dark blue is very good. The blue is good. The brown is fair. Then you go to poor, very poor, and failed. If we look at just the ones that are fair, poor, very poor, and failed streets, those are ones that are... That need to be reconstructed. Once they get past to that fair condition or below, you're looking at a reconstruction, not just a surface treatment. And we still have 16 million square feet that fit that category, which is about $160 million. Next slide. Our PCI history, since it's been measured, is at the highest level it's ever been. It is at an 82. So we are in a good spot that way. We think we can get by with some surface treatments on the roads that we have. We're not going to be able to do a lot of reconstruction in the years going forward. Once we get to about 2019, that 2 million goes up to about 8 to 9 million dollars a year. That'll also coincide when we have about 16 million a year in sewer fund for reconstruction. At that point, I think we'll be in a pretty strong position between the street fund and the sewer fund that we'll be able to build ourselves in those streets that are failed. But we're going to have several years where we're going to have some of the roads that are in not great condition are not going to get any better, obviously. And we're just... We're going to have to hold those together. And so that was the reason why we felt that an increase in the street fund for the right-of-way toll would be a good option. It was in the very back...
It's not on these.
Go ahead.
It's not on these.
We had included some extra slides should the subject come up and we can make these available to you all after the presentation, for sure.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that? If there's a split... If there was a split, John, in funding the public safety and then funding the streets, I mean, would that be helpful? I mean, would that still meet the needs? Staff anticipating, since you're going to see that spike in 2018?
Well, and so what we were looking at actually was looking at all the funding. So it's... You know, we talk... We concentrate primarily on an expense side here when we look at our budgets going from year to year. What we're talking about is a shift, not just in the expense side, moving some more of those things to the street fund that could be funded out of street fund, but also looking at some of those revenues, like the In-Lu for sewer, like the right-of-way toll for water, moving into the revenue side of that, where we have a consistent funding source to take care of the infrastructure, not just... Not looking at just our streets, but also our ADA improvements, some of those things that you budget for in your capital improvement program from year to year, having a dedicated funding source within street fund to handle those. And that's just a strategic shift we'd like to see in the next two to three years that we move towards. For your information, City of Sparks does use 3% to streets and 2% to general fund is what they currently do in their split.
Yeah, but I think in the past, too, the council has dedicated a portion, I know since I've been here, to streets. I believe the franchise... We took that out the last couple of years. I mean, so... I think it's just a balancing act of what's the most critical in this snapshot of time right now. So that's what I was asking with staff, if there was a matrix of, you know, what we're looking at. Because I think public safety is important. I think roads are important, too.
You didn't dis... And I apologize if I've overlooked it, but the curb painting and restriping of the redevelopment or the area downtown and stuff for special events, so we're getting ready for all of our visitors this summer.
That is correct.
We didn't eliminate any of that?
Did not eliminate it. In fact, I believe we're starting next week.
All right. You didn't... I've noticed driving around at night, the light bulbs that used to be very bright in our candy canes seem a lot dimmer than they used to be.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not going to comment on that.
Well, I will, Mr. Mayor. I think one of the things is, I'm not sure if they're the same ones, but we swapped some of those out with some LEDs or some other ones. And we knew upfront they'd be less, but our power bill's gone way down?
Yeah. It's actually, Mr. Mayor, you're correct. We put in a compact fluorescent, so the looks funny, saves money that you have in your household, we put in a much larger size of that in there.
That was my last-time campaign slogan, too.
But the lumens... But the lumens were pretty consistent. But I'd be happy to look into that.
We need to look into it. And one area, driving around downtown this week, I noticed all the lights out by the Eldorado on the street. And I don't know if that has to do with the maintenance going on up the street, but we need to make sure all these lights are burning. And we don't need to turn them down any more than they are because we're not getting the safety value that we did for a while when they were real bright and everything.
If I can just add to that, we are just undergoing a process to do a complete audit of our streetlight inventory. So we've got the... As you recall, you voted on that several meetings ago. So we've got those folks coming in to do an inventory. So we'll make sure that all the lamps are operating at their allocated wattage and that we're paying the correct amount. And we have the right lamps and lights in our inventory, so...
But the value we saw from safety of people being able to walk around with the brightness is way down to what it used to be. And I would like you all to really look into that. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Last one, Mr. Mayor's communication.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Last slide before we break for lunch is the communications and technology. We've included in the budget $15,000 to begin to catch up on our deferred maintenance or replacement of PCs within the city. We've also included $42,000 for a new agenda management system. There's a lot of staff time, as you can imagine, that is spent preparing for council agendas and council meetings, as well as follow-up to that. And what we're looking at here is a technology solution that would make us more efficient in that process. This agenda management system that we're looking at, some of the features that it also has is the ability to sync the video to the minutes of the meeting so that after a meeting, if you wanted to see the video for a particular item, you could actually go directly to that item. The video is indexed, so to speak, so it would take you right to that particular item. It also has built into it a council follow-up, if you will. So whatever assignments come out of council, there's a piece to this that fits into that as well that manages that process as well. The next item is the cloud email system or outsourcing our email system. I think we have all experienced the challenges that we have with the city's email system. I think the staff here does a great job. We just spend very little on our email system. It currently is an in-house system, but it's a very inexpensive system. I think from a productivity standpoint, if we went out and outsourced our email so we could collaborate on calendars and those sorts of things that we can't do under their current system, this would be money well spent from an efficiency standpoint. And then the last item on there is just server maintenance costs and increases to those. And, Mr. Mayor, if the council has any questions, we certainly have staff here to address those.
Questions? Ms. Frazza?
Yeah, on this one, Andrew, and I think council knows from personal experience. I think our laptops are eight to 10 years old. And I know the ones in our office are... I mean, literally, it takes 15 minutes to boot up the computer. How is it for staff? Because to me, that's a productivity issue. And technology is like a huge key to being an efficient city. So I realize it's been deferred for quite some time. I only see 15,000 in there. How many computers is that? Well, I guess with the iPad now, can you buy them both?
Robert Chisel, Finance Director. We... It is probably not what is necessary to get us up to speed where we need to be. We had to make decisions on how much to expand. One of the things, the Communications and Technology Division has done a great job of replacing a lot of the old outdated computers with what's commonly referred to as a network computer as part of the energy-saving program. So a lot of the employees were able to find, you know... We were able to upgrade those computers with a network computer to save them. Yes, all our laptops, pretty much all of them need to be replaced. A lot of our desktops need to be replaced. And it's probably about 20 PCs or less, depending on what kind of mix you have of getting laptops versus desktops.
Not today. We've got 80, you know.
Well, they've deliberately let ours age so we can't cause problems.
It's because you still want to get these, Mr. Mayor.
No, no, I'm tired of trees.
How much is this costing us? I'd like an estimate, seriously.
I'm tired of killing trees.
Every week. 12 bucks?
Okay, let's go, Mr. Klinger. What else? Did you have any other questions? Let's take a short break, about 30 minutes for lunch.
It's up to you, sir.
Since it looks like we probably won't be meeting on Monday, I want to ask, are there any questions on any of the items that we've already gone over at this time? Yes, Mr. Doris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just a real quick, Mr. City Manager. On the city council's budget, the Lear Theater, $150,000, what is that for?
It's something that I put in there and requested because of the Lear Theater. I went to the Lear Theater people, the board, and asked them to turn it over to Art Town. Got with Art Town and talked them into stepping up and taking it over and making it work. And I'm trying to help them get through this first year with their budgets and everything of how they can do it until they can get some fundraising going.
What's their shortfall now to get that building up and running?
Oh, they're probably looking at about $5 million or $6 million.
That's what I thought, but they're still way off.
There's foundations that I've already talked to, now that there's a new management group, are willing to come up and put money in and make the Lear become a viable operation. And Mr. Azzi's head of Art Town, but it really, the going through it and stuff is just something that I thought that we really needed to do to help that, because that's a viable project, and it's one that the community's been very interested in.
And then, Andrew, the million-dollar discretionary or funds for the council, where is that identified in the budget?
Councilman Dorch, we don't have a, it's within the various departments, so and we spoke to the individual council members to get feedback on what they wanted to put in the budget, so some of it you see in the different department budgets, some of it you see in the CIP, so there's not a, there's not a a list of sort of council priorities, if you will, I mean, we could certainly put one together.
Okay, so will those be identified as we go through this?
They've already been, a lot of them have already been covered, as we've gone through the various, you know, the various department budgets. We've covered items that, in discussion with individual council members, we included in the budget.
Okay. What's that? I don't, I don't know.
It was in, Lear was in the.
Yes, Lear is in the, it's in the city council budget, and that was in discussions with city council members, we included that funding.
Well, it's just, yeah, I mean, I'm just, I know that there's that, that million dollars, that, I mean, the new budget item really for the council to spend, a million dollars, 150,000 per council member, that was added to the budget this year, and it's just not really identified anywhere.
No, they're within each different department, it depends on, it depends on what the funding was for. We put it in the various departments, and it actually came out to be less than that, I think it was around 800,000, I think, were specific council-identified projects that we, that we put in, but we just put those projects within each department's budget.
Those are just projects that we all talked about, we wanted or something.
Correct.
There was nothing that was assigned to any one member of the council or anything.
And if I could elaborate, we.
Correct, that is correct.
So we met with council members. So similarly to how we meet with budget or with departments before the budget cycle and sit down and say, okay, for the planning for this year, what would you like to see funded in Public Works, for instance? We sat down with the council members to talk about how we could direct resources to your priorities during the budget cycle, so that we could have that pre-planned information in advance. And so those items ended up in various areas of the budget, from the CIP, as the city manager mentioned, to the city manager's office, because of Neighborhood Services, I think is where we ended up putting the bi-local campaign. The Lear Theater was in the council budget, so wherever those items that were identified as priorities were most, you know, were the best fit was, that's where those items ended up in the budget, so.
And there were some, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I mean, there were some projects that were identified where multiple council members put into, if you will, that, that project, it was a priority of multiple members, and so that's. The 75,000, is that what you're speaking to? Yeah, that was, that came from, that was a council priority that we added as part of that. The entire amount, the 75,000.
Is there a council allocation, I mean, I'm just, I just thought we came up with projects and things that we're looking at, I don't think.
That's not what was presented to us, I mean, yeah, we were told, we were told that they were gonna allocate $150,000 per council member.
For special projects?
For special projects, that the council members were focused on. I mean, I was just kinda curious as to where that was going.
Yep, right there.
A lot of it is on that list.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
A couple of other questions I have, or just comments. And it's something you brought up the other day, and we discussed a little bit, Mr. Mayor, that we might wanna have was when the Rotary Club did stuff over at the.
Yes.
How we charged them something, $250 to tap into the water.
$250 to tap into the water source, we got that corrected, didn't we? We need to have a budget, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
That's what I was getting to.
But we need to have a budget that the manager has, I don't care if it's 10,000, 20,000, whatever, when we have some ridiculous things to charge the Rotary Club 250 bucks, when they're buying all the block, buying all the sand, buying all the trees, buying all the, building it and doing everything, and spending several thousand dollars, and we go zap them for 250 dollars to connect them to the water supply. Some of those things, I mean, we're getting a bad reputation with a lot of those, and we need to give the city manager a pool of 20,000 dollars, and he has to account for it every year, and tell us where he is or what he's spending on, but I mean, we gotta, we gotta stop some of these ridiculous things that we're charging for, or coming up with something.
That's where I was getting to, Mr. Mayor, because some things, you can't just waive the fee, and we have to charge them. So I think if the city manager had at least the same amount we had, the 10,000 dollars, where he could handle some of these things and actually pay for it, and maybe he'd have to come back to council when it got close, and the council could approve those expenditures, and then it just got replenished to 10,000. But that way, a lot of these smaller things could go away, because they could just appeal to him, and he could say, okay, that doesn't make sense. We can't legally just waive everything.
No, no, no.
But that would solve that problem, cause it wasn't staff's fault that we have these ordinances, that we say they can't waive things. So I think that there should be a line item for that. Whatever you think that amount should be, just bring it back to us at the final, whether it's 10 or 20, and you'd have a policy where that, just keep a spreadsheet, and it comes back to the council at the time, and when it gets close to 10,000, we said, those are great, and just replenish it.
And during a. Somebody walks in, forgets and brings a dog, and we're writing them a citation. Give them a warning, tell them not to or something.
That's a different problem.
That's a different animal, that's right.
Issues, I mean, that 500 dollars, and I think a lot of us did talk to the manager about that. I was there for a lot of that day, and I just, I think we need to be encouraging of special events and trying to accommodate, and certainly, I think this was a huge undertaking for the first year for that group
Oh, yeah.
to come in, and maybe everything wasn't perfect, but I think that we've gotta try and, I think, accommodate people who wanna do those things. So I'd be totally in favor of that type of fund. I don't know if that has to be approved by.
Rotary Club's already gone in and built a little, a park with a hopscotch and a little basketball court. They did that earlier in the, well, they did it at the end of last year, and then they came in and put this landscaping and stuff. And for us to discourage people from doing that for 200 bucks.
Well, and Mr. Mayor, if I may, on the, on the special events, cause Bill Thomas and myself, we actually went to the Parks Special Events Committee where the Earth Day event was coming back, I guess they do a review, a sort of a post-event review, and so Bill Thomas and myself actually went to that meeting, and we're gonna look at the process that we go through for finding event organizers, cause what, you know, what we presented at there, what Bill presented at the meeting was, look, we don't wanna discourage other event organizers out there from stepping forward if we're gonna be perceived by the community to be, you know, hard to work with, or punitive, or whatever the case may be, so in that particular case, that is something that we intervened on, and we are looking at, and we need to look at our process overall on that.
Did we actually charge the Rotary Club 250 bucks?
That one I can't speak to, maybe.
I think that in that instance, it gets to Councilman Iozzi's issue, which is, what I was able to find out is there was a requirement for a permit that we would normally require everybody to pay, and there's really no procedure in place for the staff to waive those, so what we would have to do is replace, since it's an enterprise fund, that 250 with money on our own, so if we had a fund as described, that we could do that.
We need to take them a check and give it back to them.
Right.
We'll bring that back.
That, and I don't know if it's in here now, but it would probably be this fiscal year, but this parking situation in Midtown, the 30,000 dollars, I don't think that's identified in the budget, whether it's next fiscal year or this fiscal year, I'm just bringing that up, that I've been approached, and I think they've talked to some of you too about, about doing that program, so I'd like to see how we could move forward on that one. And where are we with the Virginia Street Bridge, are we gonna need any money in that for next fiscal year, or are we sort of getting the funding from the state and feds and hopefully flood control, are we gonna have to put money into the Virginia Street Bridge for next year?
I don't think we will, but I think John can give you an update on that, and then maybe before he does, just real quickly on Midtown, it's looking like there really are two parking strategies that we can implement, and that'll be a subject of an item on your ninth agenda, but the short of it is, it's not as inexpensive as 25,000. The solution I think everybody wants is much more expensive, so we need to work through that, and it might ultimately be a decision of whether we have paid parking or limited-time parking.
Right, and I understand all that, but the 30,000 was the trial period to see whether it would work, to whether we would go into paid parking or not, so I just wanna bring that up, we're budget, so we don't think it's any gritty of it.
We'll talk about it, yes.
But that's where we are, and then I had some people coming to me, I'm just bringing up everybody who's talked to me too, whether we vote for it or not, at the end of the day, coming to meet in my office about wanting to start an art fair, Mr. Mayor, in the city of Reno. And they were looking for some funding too, of about 12,000 dollars, I think, and you and I discussed it with them.
I visited with them also, and what they're doing is looking at the La Quinta Art Festival. The La Quinta Art Festival is one of the premier juried shows in the whole country. And you have, to be displayed there, you have to pass a test and be juried, and it brings over a million people down to La Quinta, California. And so, they wanna start this on a small deal, but if we could help them get started, as the councilman says, would really be fantastic, and it's 10 or 12,000 dollars, and would really help, because to get that over in Wingfield, eventually I can picture that art festival going all the way down Riverside Drive, and along the walks and close the street often, people meandering around, it could be a real big thing.
So I'm not proposing, I thought, to let the other council members know and bring up things that you've heard about, cause just like we've had public comment before, we've tried to solve all those problems, at the end of the day, if we're not gonna have the meeting on Monday, there might be a few extra things moving around by the time we do our budget adoption, so those are all the things that I know about right now, so I wanted to.
I'd like for them to look at the 10 or 12,000 dollars for this art festival, because I think it'll be a premier deal. I flew, councilman and myself, and.
Art Town, Beth McMillan?
Beth went with us, and we toured the art festival and everything, and it, it's really a show, people come from all over the country.
We probably have room to include that also in the special event money if we'd like to.
Y'all look at it and see and everything when you come back.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Mr. Mayor, you got 355,000 dollars, I mean, there's a perfect opportunity to use that money. And then the only comment I had is for staff to, I'd love to see what that Midtown parking solution's gonna look like on the ninth, cause I've gotten similar phone calls, and then on the 5% franchise fee, that's gonna generate 900,000, I'd like staff, with respect to the additional police officers, how we might use, carve off some of that money in a way that's efficient to hire police officers, and at the same time progressively fund the deferred maintenance.
Anything else, Ms. Frazek?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, and I think I'm totally in approval of the capital improvement program, I think just looking up there and the other things identified in the budget, just to add a couple of things too, I think the Midtown parking, I've gotten several calls on that, I think to get all the staff details, that's gonna be on our agenda next Wednesday. But they have so much synergy going on there, so much private investment, I think it's definitely worth taking a look at what we can do for the parking over there. And other than that, I support having that, that funding for you, so we don't have those types of issues in the future, but I think everything on here, especially the funding for seniors and Lear and everything, I think is good.
John, down by the apartments, down next to where they're cut out and they're starting to lay out a new shopping area?
On Toma?
On Toma, are we gonna make that a one-way street, so they can have diagonal park, or angle parking and pick up a lot of spaces in that area?
We looked at the diagonal parking, the width of the street doesn't accommodate for, for the diagonal parking on the one side, so there's some options that we've looked at for how we might increase parking, but the biggest problem we have right now, Mr. Mayor, is actually the width of the street.
What, I mean, how much space do you have to have when you put them at an angle, and even slope them shorter or whatever?
Yeah, we've looked at all those different.
And if it's one-way going one-way, you don't have to have that much.
Yeah.
With 12 feet?
So it's, the street is about, as I recall, four to six feet too narrow for implementing that type of a parking.
Can you change the angle of the parking spaces and pick up your space?
And we've looked at that, and as we've looked at trying to maximize the parking by the tilt of the angle, it also minimizes the number of spaces you get on the one side that you would do that to.
Well, let's figure out how many we can get, and let's make them happen, so that, that'll really help that Midtown area. And one thing that's not on the, the parking meters we have around town, tell those people to put signs on them or something that tell people what it is, they wanna charge so much. The guy wants to go in for 15 minutes and they wanna charge him, how many dollars, two, five?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Flansburgh can provide an update on that as well, we actually just, if we haven't sent it yet, we're going to send the vendor a letter, and I'll let.
But I mean, even make it so that, do they have to pay after 6 o'clock in the evening? Does it run 24 hours a day? I mean, it's goofy, I'm tired of people stopping me walking down the street complaining about them with no instructions, no nothing. Either tell these people to get in or get out.
That's what the letter says.
Thank you very much.
Not exactly in those words, Mr. Mayor, but.
Well, no, you're more diplomatic than I am, thank you very much.
And too, that's part of the confusion, I am a little leery about just the citation aspect of it, when it's not, I think there could be an element of confusion if we don't have meters in that area as well, when you have meters, you know, in the other parts of the city, so I'm hoping that all those options are gonna be presented Wednesday, next Wednesday, for us to explore.
Alright, any other question, any other things you wanna bring up? Any questions on the areas we've already covered? Mr. Klinger, you're on.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know, before you, we have the capital improvement program. The capital improvement program does fund the standard annual maintenance programs, as well as, back to the first.
Put that list back up there again, would you?
Yeah, one more, one more back, there you go. Funds the standard annual maintenance programs, and I can have Julie Conway and John Flansburgh go into details on those items. We did include in, on the list of capital improvement programs, though, we did include some additional projects, the Moana Site Improvements Project, 400,000, the Art in Reno Project, and the Beaumont Park Project. And I'll let staff go into additional details, or we can answer questions, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like.
Okay, anybody got any questions about Mr. Dorch?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, just on the Moana Site, have we approved a design for the Moana Site?
I don't know that the city council has approved a design, I think it went to the. Yeah, go ahead, Julie, Julie Conway.
For the record, Julie Conway, Parks and Recreation Community Services Director, it was approved by the Recreation and Parks Commission this week, it is on your agenda for May 9th.
So out of the, was it one of the concept plans that was presented, that we got the memo on, was it one of those?
It was a hybrid of one of those, we sat down with the stakeholders, with the CFA, who is the company who is pro bono donating their services, and with staff, and went through that, those three designs, and came up with a plan that we feel would work for the site and for the stakeholders. And you'll be seeing that in the May 9th agenda packet.
Yeah, I'd like to see those, because I question whether the field should run north-south or run east-west.
And, and I mean, the challenge too for me is, the frontage on Moana, I mean, to have those fields fronting on Moana, is that really the highest and best use for that property?
The, let me, let me say that the direction of the fields can change.
The, let me, let me say that the direction of the fields can change depending upon the need. So, look at it as, the plan shows it as north-south fields, however, it would be divided up.
Right.
So, just to answer your question. Your question is, how best to use the site? Is that your question?
Well, I mean, I look at, we've got a major arterial there, and we've got, in my opinion, very valuable property on that frontage. You know, if we're gonna tear down the stadium, we're gonna tear down the pool. I mean, that's extremely valuable property sitting on the frontage. And I know a few years ago, granted, it was another world, there were definitely some developers that were interested in doing a public-private partnership on that site that could really maximize what we were able to accomplish, and using that, using the valuable property as leverage to help make other things happen, whether it be a Big League Dreams type thing, or, I know Pierre and I have both talked to some of the guys at Big League Dreams about those possibilities, and doing, and combining like an aquatics center in there with it. You know, right now's not the time. I've talked to some of those developers, they're still very interested. Obviously, funding right now is challenging to get any of those projects off the ground, but, I mean, two, three years from now, I mean, that's, that could be very prime property to really leverage and get something even bigger and better than what we're proposing to put. I mean, I just question the rationale between putting soccer fields fronting a major arterial like that. I mean, I think you're gonna have soccer balls in the street, I think. I mean, it's, to me, it's just a challenge to make that work, and I'm just curious of what your opinion is.
Yes. Number one, let me speak to the potential for some type of commercial development. That idea has not gone away for looking at the aquatics center, and how that can be factored into the design of the aquatics center, because of the very reasons you say, whether it be a private fitness, an office on top, you know, whatever that might be. So, that process hasn't, hasn't been begun in detail, nor has that idea gone away. So, just to speak to that, we have not forgotten about that as a potential. The redevelopment, and you'll see in the proposed plan, as you saw in one of the concept plans, is that the ball fields to the south are, have been redesigned to make them more efficient. And if, and again, that's not something that...
Where's the funding for that gonna come from?
That's something that would be coming from either private and/or working with the Little League folks, who have looked at and have identified some potential funding sources. But that would be a future phase. So, I don't think we're ruling out the Big Dreams. I know about that, and...
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying though, but to give up that property, that frontage on Moana, I mean, that's, that's a critical piece to leverage, I think.
But at this point, we're not giving it up. All we're doing is cleaning up the property. We're turned, we're not building anything. We're tearing down the buildings and cleaning up the place, with this 400,000.
Bob, that's not, I mean, the proposal here is to build those two soccer fields.
The, yeah, the 400,000 that you see there, and if I could have the clerk pass out the latest information, have you done that?
We got it.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, the proposal is to build those fields.
The 400,000 would be the city's contribution towards the demolition of the property, as the mayor indicated, to make it a clean slate.
The entire property?
The entire property.
Okay.
That's, that's the proposal. So, let me speak first to the use of that particular site, and the use of the fields there. That proposal, bringing that in, and the need for those soccer fields, we do need soccer fields.
I agree. I mean, I've been trying to get those ones built in the North Valleys for how many years now?
Exactly. So, we need soccer fields. If, for some reason, and we're not doing this to change it, I mean, we wanna have those soccer fields and those soccer games there. From a design perspective, it's good to be able to look through the site and use the site, and have soccer games, and have that site be open. So, for security reasons, it is a good thing to have that available, or have that designed at that location, have frontage for the, the pool, have frontage on both Moana and Baker. So, that will be a decision, you know, certainly you're deciding on the demolition of this with the idea that the fields would be the next step. And those fields are being funded in part by private money and some city money. So, certainly that is the council's decision to move forward on that, based on council direction. That's where we've gone so far. My opinion from a design perspective, it is, it is an appropriate design for that site to keep it open and accessible. How we implement...
But I guess the question though was...
How we implement the ball fields is still open to consideration.
I mean, I know you're saying to keep it open, but again, I mean, that, that frontage property, I'm just talking, I'm really just talking fronting Moana. I mean, that's gonna be your most valuable piece of property, and if you can use that to leverage to get something much more, much better behind that, don't you think that's a better use?
Well, I don't think we've ruled that out with the way, where the pool is now. I mean, the...
But even where the fields are, we're proposing the fields.
Dwight, I agree with you. The issue that I have right now, though, the soccer fields aren't costing that much money. If someone's coming in talking about a $40 million development, you know, they wanna partner with us, the 200, $300,000 to move the soccer field somewhere else shouldn't be a big deal. So, in the time that they come forward, I mean, if, as long as we replace it, I mean, we have Renown coming to want in Pickett Park all the time. So, I don't disagree with you.
And I understand where you're coming from, but in that sense, does it make sense for us to spend 400,000 today, when we could be, when we could be hiring more police officers?
Because they would be...
...about is demolition.
You would have to...
But we don't have to spend it today.
You would have to do the demolition anyway, if you can offer it up.
But we didn't have to do it today. And if you had that public-private partnership, someone else might come in and do that demo for us, as part of the deal to put it together. That's all I'm saying is, I understand that those fields are only 270,000, and that's mostly funded by the leagues and private donation. But I'm saying, right now, when we're looking at the budget situation we're in today, does it make sense, we're trying to, I mean, you know, hire more police officers, you know, it comes back to, okay, we've carved out this 400,000, but where did it come from? I mean, what are we not doing? I mean, we were, a month ago, talking about a $6 million deficit going into this next year. So, what is not getting done?
All the things you mentioned.
Because we're spending 400,000.
Well, except these are also one-time expenditures. They're not ongoing, so hiring police officers, you need, you need an ongoing revenue source, not a one-time shot, because then what do you do next year? That's, that's the issue.
Well, but it'd be a one-time shot to do improvements to the fields behind there, if we wanted to go in and make some improvements to the fields behind there.
Absolutely.
Those ball, those ball fields...
I mean, there's a lot of deferred maintenance that we have out there right now, that we're not doing, that's a one-time shot.
If we went in and redid those baseball fields the way they're sitting today, after Mr. Klinger and I drove that the other day...
I agree.
...is the biggest waste of money we'd ever do. Because you wanna go over to Swope Park, behind Swope Middle School, and that's the type of park you wanna build, with a central concession stand, with bleachers and all, centrally located. And I really think, well, to get this all cleaned up and torn down, and then look at building baseball fields and stuff like that, I really, I really think we need...
Let me answer one more thing, I think, is, I think, I think that Councilwoman Frazza was very smart in seeing that RTC was already doing project on Moana, and went to that demolition guy, and said, could we jump onto that contract? And I think that's one of the reasons why it's only 400,000 to tear them down, is because there, if you go out in two years, it might be 800,000. It's for someone to come in there and re-each...
That argument could be made for anything else that we would spend that 400,000 on today too.
No, no, I understand, but it could be more money later. You're right, we could spend this 400,000 anyway, that's why we're here.
And that's, and that's why I'm asking the questions. You know, I mean, when we first started talking about this project, it wasn't gonna take any general fund money. They were gonna go out and raise all the money. Now, we're talking about spending 400,000 out of the general fund, you know, to move this forward. And, and again, I just don't know that it's the best use of those funds today. And especially if, especially...
I think that's just a difference of opinion, only because you said we need more soccer fields. So, we either do or we don't.
Well, but I don't, I agree we need more soccer fields. I don't know that fronting them on a major arterial is the, is the best, is the best spot to put those.
So, where else in that area could we put soccer fields? Where else is a large enough site to put soccer fields in that area? Because you also want people, kids to be able to walk to them. You know, you don't wanna put them out somewhere where everyone has to get in the car and drive. It's a neighborhood kind of a park.
It is, but...
So, where would you put them? Find me a place, if you can get the guys from Park Lane to say, let's put it over there on that big 50 acres.
And that's, and that's, and I'll tell you, that's the problem you're gonna have, if we do get a public-private partnership down the road, is everyone's gonna say, well, you're taking away our soccer fields. I mean, you're gonna have all the soccer...
Well, but you, but you'd have to replace them somewhere. I agree with that sentiment, because you need soccer fields in that neighborhood. That neighborhood needs baseball and soccer, and that's why we kept the pool, saying that needs to go there, because it's traditionally been there. But it's also a neighborhood with so many kids, it's so dense, and that's part of our Todd corridors. You have to provide those amenities close to where people live.
But do you, do you, you don't believe that there's gonna be soccer balls being kicked out onto Moana?
I believe that can be handled, any more than there were baseballs flying over hitting car windshields. Weren't there? I mean, they're gonna put up, they're gonna put up the netting, from what I understand, I'm not designing it, but it's not men's league, I think it's gonna be used for kids.
Which is a bigger concern.
Well, I don't think they're gonna be running into, into Moana. I don't know. It's just, do we wanna do that or not? So, any other questions?
No, I do have a couple of comments.
Okay.
I, I understand Dwight's concerns, but the reality of it is, there is not gonna be a developer that's gonna show up anytime. So, this is a kind of great interim use until the economy improves, and somebody shows up and says, let's develop the site, and, you know, he'll help pay for the cost of replacing the soccer fields. And we definitely need soccer fields now. And more importantly, you've got stakeholders that are putting money into it, you know, because it's, it's gonna be a neighborhood soccer, soccer field. So, for those reasons, I think it's important we move forward with it. I think everything you said, Dwight, is still on the table, as Julie said, it's just not the right time right now. And when things get better, right, it might not happen for five years, so why not, you know, might, might not, might not use it as a soccer field in the meantime? And the stakeholders, the pool, I mean, they're still into the design, so, and that hopefully will be a catalyst, catalyst for the stakeholders on the pool side to go out and raise some money for a facility.
Councilman?
Yeah, I just think Councilwoman Zodra and I have been working very hard to get this accomplished. I think what happens if we, I mean, quite frankly, the pool closed on our watch, sitting here. And I believe we have an obligation of a city to take down a blighted area. And I, to me, I look at this twofold, this economic development piece too, because we have all the stakeholders, Sharon and I worked with the stakeholders, you have the Babe Ruth and the baseball, they wanna see this come down, so they can start their fundraising for the new fields. We've got the soccer folks, we've got the aquatics folks. So, I think this is a private partnership, public partnership, exactly what you're looking for, Councilman, because I believe the pool people, and Mr. Mayor, I know you've been talking to them as well, regardless, that site's gotta come down. I think we're getting a very good bid, because of the, I think, Diversified's working with the trash companies to donate a lot of their services, haul it off, things like that, that they've been doing. And I think just adding on to the RTC's contract while we're there, we're getting a very good bid climate. But I think, I mean, you're more familiar with this than even I am, with these softball tournaments and baseball tournaments, how many people they bring into the city, and how much we're losing out on by not being able to have enough fields to have these tournaments, whether it's pool, soccer, baseball, so really, it's just getting the synergy down. But ultimately, that facility closed. While we were sitting here, I believe we have an obligation to clean up, it's the heart and soul central part of the city, and so, I think that's why, I know it's an expenditure out of the general fund, but I think it's well worth it, no different than us taking the general fund and supporting the RTC site to help with tourism for the bowlers coming in, no different than...
That's not general fund money.
We, I think we've put some general fund money into that, if I recall, and we may even need a little more. I know it's room tax money too, but we've put some general fund money into that area. So, I think it's just supporting what we're trying to do around town to really make things wonderful. And I think the RTC site has been a very good addition. I'm not opposed to that. I think it's been good for our community, for tourism, but I think we need the same, to do the same south of town, and Councilwoman Zodra's district as well.
Food Truck Friday again tomorrow. I gotta be careful how I say that.
Any other discussion?
I got a quick question for staff. On the general fund, the 50,000, is that, is that, did that come out of the council allocation that you were talking about before, Andrew?
The Foster Drive roof repair, is that the one you're looking at?
No, the ADA improvements?
No, no, the ADA improvements. I think that's a standard item that we have, an annual item.
Any other discussion? Okay. You want Mr. Mayor?
All right, Mr. Mayor, we'll move on. Next slide is continues capital improvement program, the room surcharge, you see the National Bowling Stadium improvements item, as well as the city center site improvements, and then 5.65 million dollars worth of street fund items. Mr. Mayor, turn it back over to you for any questions the council may have.
Any council questions or anything? Mr. Razzie?
It's not, I know that in our thing here, it talks about, it's not on the agenda, so I don't know where did it come up there, or we get to the property tax?
Yes, yeah, we are getting to that.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Mr. Klinger.
And the last slide is just the additional capital improvement funds from the various funding sources. Again, Mr. Mayor, if there are any questions, otherwise we can move to the next slide.
Okay, any question they may?
Yeah, just a quick one, on the pedestrian ramps, CDBG money, is that's in addition to the ADA improvements? Are there any ADA improvements built into that 70 as well?
Rob Miller, for the record. Normally, what they do is when they do those pedestrian ramp improvements, those are built to ADA standards.
Right, so we're not drawing on that 50, it'd be in addition to...
No, this is completely separate funding in addition to the 50.
All right.
And I did mention it to you early, the city vehicle replacement, we don't have to buy the top of the line. So, some of the vehicles I've seen running around are top-of-the-line vehicles, and maybe, I know having certain things makes the trade-in value better, but let's see if we can really use some real finesse.
I heard they're giving a good trade-in value for that one.
So, are we not, are we not looking at any increase in sewer fees again this year? I believe so.
We already approved a 8% increase per year for the next five years, so October 1, there will be an increase, but nothing, no additional action taken.
And we feel comfortable with that, because that was, we did that a long time ago, and they said that it wasn't keeping up. So, this year, it's just the way it's going, and no changes to the sewer fees?
Just, just the...
The ones that have already been approved?
The ones that have already been approved, nothing new.
Thank you.
And the final slide, Mr. Mayor concludes the CIP presentation.
For the record, I just wanted to change the total amount. I apologize, these slides changed as late as last night. The total, if anyone out there's doing the math, is 40,297,651. So, I apologize that the slide is not...
And on the irrigation system replacement, is that because people are stealing our stuff? Or is that just normal wear and tear?
For the record, Julie Conway, Parks and Recreation Community Services Director. Based on our water management plan, we're converting over to automated systems throughout the, throughout the system to make it more efficient.
Continuing with that automation system?
Right, and to hook it up to the satellite system that we have to save water. And so, we're slowly doing this, working with Public Works throughout the system, and it's saving us cost in electrical, as well as cost in water. So, that's what this is.
So, is this a race? We're gonna have all of our parks synchronized before we have our traffic signals synchronized apparently?
It's working.
Our traffic signals are synchronized if everybody will drive this video.
50% of our traffic lights aren't even on the system, Mr. Mayor. That's, I mean, they don't connect.
Now, we will be getting on Moana, we will be getting drawings of what we're looking at and everything, so that we, as a council, I know it was a community recommendation, but I want this council to have to say so.
I want this council to have some say so.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we will. Okay, moving on to the redevelopment agency, the funding you see here is for, actually, RDA 1, continues funding for the parking gallery, the West Street Market, and the debt service requirements that we have. We don't have a slide on RDA 2, but it's important that the council knows what we have included in the budget for RDA 2, because remember, RDA 2 is where the fire relocation loan payments come out of. We have included as part of the manager's recommended budget, a $736,000 transfer from the general fund to RDA 2 to meet those payment obligations moving forward. So I just wanted the council to know that I don't have a slide for it, but that's a policy decision that you all will need to make.
But you have that built in.
We do have that built in.
Thank you very much. Mr. Azzi.
On the West Street Market, what's the status of our agreement with UNR to take over that last piece? I thought they would be in by now.
Pete Wallace, City Manager's Office, for the record. Staff is negotiating that agreement with UNR currently. It went over to the university about two months ago, and their attorney is currently looking at it. We do have a meeting with them tomorrow to review all the terms of that agreement. Hopefully, we'll have them in the next couple of weeks.
You keep me informed as to what's going on, if I can help grease those wheels, I'd just be curious to see why it's, I know it's, I heard it's them, they're real estate attorneys, and, but I'd like to know about it, to see what I could do.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, we can move on if there are no other questions on redevelopment.
We'll go ahead and move on.
Okay, the, the next slide is right-of-way toll, we, we discussed that, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if the council wants to, to discuss that any further. That was the, going from the 3% to the 5%, which would generate the $900,000 a year. I don't know if the council has a, a direction they want to provide on that.
I think we should go ahead and do it. Yes, let me.
Other than the comment I made about looking how we could phase it in and have money for police.
Yes.
Well, is this in the budget now that you presented today?
This is not in the budget that we presented today, so this would be additional funds.
Good. Go ahead.
This slide is the property tax option that the council can also make, and this, too, is not included currently in the budget, so this would be additional funds that would be available. NRS 354 allows a maximum tax rate of $3.66. We're currently 1.4 cents below that. If you raise the property tax to the cap, it generates a little over a million dollars towards the general fund.
Well, personally, I think we should do it, but let me go to Mr. Azzi.
Can you tell, we used to be at the 366. What has made, what has decreased? Has it been the county, has it been the school district? What's been the cause of that decrease to get us to 1.4?
Rob Miller, for the record. We were never at the 366, we were always at the cap, that's what we'd always been told, which is the 364 level. But after a, a review of legislation that was passed exempting 2 cents of state debt, entities that are smaller than a county can actually go and use those 2 cents in our own tax rate, so that allows us to go to 366.
So is this something that the county could also impose?
No, no, it has to be an entity within a county, it can't be a county itself.
So GID or the City Sparks or something, this is a very.
Correct. There's Palomino.
How do we get to 365 now? Maybe I don't want to ask that question. Okay, so, so that's an option for us to do, and when would we have to have that in front of us to discuss and vote on, to have that imposed by July 1st?
You would vote for that when you adopt the budget, it's part of the resolution setting the tax rates at that point.
Is that time enough for them to, because they told us before, if you don't tell us early, you miss the year.
Yes, because what happens is, is we submit the budget June 1st to the State Department Taxation, and then they review the overlapping tax rates and, and set those out for July 1.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Brad.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I know we went out on the voters, for instance, for like the street fund and, and those types of overrides, and we did have safety 88, which has expired now. If council decided to do this, could we do it through ordinance where we're saying to the public, this money is going to be set aside specifically for police officers? Is that some binding thing we can do, dedicated revenue source towards public safety, make that commitment?
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office, we can take a look at that, but even an ordinance is capable of being changed by council direction again, so, but you can give that direction in a budget, you know, would probably be the most appropriate place.
But it could come back, if, if council were to move forward with this, we could say specifically for the purpose of.
Police.
Police, because I think the fire, we had the great news today, but we could, I mean, can we have that in the ordinance, for example, if we were to move forward and adopt this?
You could. It's the same way with your room tax funds for tourism, that resolution has some specific funding items in it, so you could pass a resolution. It's just as Ms. Chase said, a future council could repeal or amend that resolution at, at their pleasure.
And then, Andrew, I know you have the 1420 per hundred, what is the median, and we got that presentation last time, you're doing it for 250,000, but that's not the median price of a home now. I think, what was the presentation last week? 120, maybe?
For the record, built on Assistant City Manager.
114?
Last number I saw was around 140.
Okay, it was lower than that last time.
I don't remember what that presentation was, but.
The demographics, he came, I, I believe it was lower, because I think that 3550 is not really representative of what it would be.
We can certainly get that for the final.
Yeah, we can bring that, we can bring that information back. I don't, I don't know off the top of my head what it is, but I, it's not 250, it's below that.
Yeah, substantially below, thank you.
I didn't think we were going to make it this easy on you, so now the number of police officers should go up to 24. I want to see, I want to make sure y'all know how to work and put it together, so. There's a new recommendation of 24 on the list. See how close you can come to it.
You don't want to make it easy, do you?
No, sir.
24 divided by 2.
Mr. Azzi.
When you bring this back to us, I know it says 3550 annual increase, can you tell us what the annual decreases that we're budgeting in for? I mean, I just want to be fair to everybody to say, this is what you're paying now, and if we draw, if they drop by 5%, and it goes up, I think, I'm getting lost in all these numbers that people are throwing at me, so it'd be interesting to know what my tax bill's actually going to change, more or less. I mean, obviously, it would go down more at 5%, and if we impose this, it would go up again, but what am I paying now as opposed to what I would be paying later?
Yeah, Councilman Azzi, we can bring that back, the only thing I would say is that when we're looking at those numbers, or, I mean, we're talking about averages, on average, we expect the property taxes.
We have, we have to do that with, with everybody, yeah. On average, because we, we're already projecting it's going to go down 5% this next year, and this is, what, a 0.3% increase in taxes? No, that's 1.4 cents, but at a $4, that's almost a 0.3% increase. So overall, it would be a 4.2% decrease in taxes.
We can bring that analysis back that shows that.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Let's move forward.
So, Mr. Mayor, just, I, I want, if we can go back to the, to the property tax option, I just want to make sure we're clear that you want us to bring back some options for police funding with this, with the additional property tax. I just want to make sure that staff is clear.
And with the other things that you've come along with here recently. I know we got to the 12. This just adds a little more, getting it up maybe to 18 or 24. I just, I just need.
I don't know if my math is the same, but.
But there was other numbers that I remember going, I didn't write them down, but I know that there's other things that you've done by savings and this and that, and I know we can get a few more police officers, minimum of 12, but close, and don't divide it by 2, Mr. Azzi. Go ahead, sir, and let's wrap it up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The last slide is just to let the council know that your staff is continuing to look for organizational efficiencies, organizational realignment, those things are ongoing. We're presenting this budget to you today, but as we find those efficiencies, we'll bring those back to you. Benefit restructuring moving forward, you know, we've talked about the, the liabilities that we have, those are things that we as staff are going to continue to work on for the future and bring back to you as we negotiate those new labor contracts in the future. And then always looking at the, the debt and the asset management plans and making sure that, you know, we're in the best position we can be when it comes to our bonds and assets.
And are we still on schedule to have the transparency on our payroll and stuff?
Mr. Mayor, that will be up by the end of the month.
All right, super. First ones in the state.
Mr. Chisel didn't even flinch, so.
Well, you had the payables on there, now we're going to have this, we're going to be the first in the state on a bunch of things, so, thank you very much.
We'll be the first governmental entity in the state of Nevada to have that, no other, no other governmental entity has payroll on their website.
That's fantastic. Any questions? Yes.
Just a comment, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I want to thank you, Andrew, for bringing this forward. I think this is a nice, very clean, putting stuff away to, for future, leading us through everything. You left everything on there that we were discussing, and it's all out here. I think you've assembled a wonderful team for the city of Reno, and I honestly believe you, you've done a fantastic job in the short time you've been here, and I really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Klinger, you've done.
If I can, I, it's probably an inappropriate time, but I didn't want to leave this out, so, the issue is the Triage Center, we didn't address in the budget the Triage Center.
We need to look at that, and we need to see what we're doing so that we can.
Yeah, I wanted to get that on the table. The way it is right now, under the formula we talked about before, where everybody contributes, we would need to come up with 175,000. We have 59,000 in CDBG, the shortfall is 116,000.
We need to, we need to look at that and find out how we can do that, because that's saving the taxpayers a lot of money.
Are there some talks of moving the Triage Center? I'll ask Jody about that.
Not the best of my body, is it? They hadn't told me that, keeping secrets.
For the record, Jody Royo-Gedwin, Housing and Neighborhood Development Administrator. There was at some, one point, a brief discussion about if it would move to NAMs. That's not the discussion now, it will stay where it is, but they'll do some additional services at NAMs in connection with.
What is NAMs?
Oh, Northern Nevada Adult Mental Health Services, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
But that would not be part of the contract we're paying for.
So that, those discussions ended? How recently?
It would, it seems to have been fairly quickly, it's like I heard about it one month, and the next month, that was not the plan anymore. So, but they are talking about providing some additional services in connection with the hospital related to substance abuse and mental health stabilization, but again, that wouldn't be part of the budget we would be talking about.
So, I mean, I think in those, in those discussions, it was wrapped around trying to get the hospital, at least one of the hospitals, back into the funding source.
We actually have a commitment, if the three jurisdictions come up with their third, the hospitals will come up with their third, which will draw down the match third as well. So they are not pushing, pushing them moving into the mental health system.
And, and the people running it now finally have it where they can do medicals over there to find out whether they need to go to the hospital, to the jail, and not tying up everything with, with drug addicts and alcohol and stuff like this, but really using it as a Triage Center and not just a, a mental health capacity. And so, it's working, and we haven't had a meeting lately, are we having a meeting anytime soon?
For the CAC Governing Board. Marcia is working on setting it up for the week after next.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am, oh, you didn't want anything. Mr. Klinger? I've worked with you a lot during the last few months you've been here, you've done an outstanding job, as Mr. Azzi says, you've put together remarkable staff, you've reorganized the place, and you're doing a great job with it. And I, I know that Mr. Chisler does all, Chisel, excuse me, well, the way that comes out on the thing is Chisel R.
Why don't we just Robert?
That's, okay, Mr. Chisel. And, and the whole staff you're putting together is really great. I think it's going to be great working with everybody in the legislative session, because all these people have contacts and working with them, and it's really great, it's, it's great that what's happening with everybody, and, and thank you for doing this, and really thank you, staff, for everything you are doing, because it's amazing, and we really appreciate it. This is probably the cleanest, nicest budget that I've looked at since I've been here, so it was easy to follow, so thank you. Ms. Azzi.
Ditto to that, and just to kind of reiterate that just a few weeks ago, the headline in the paper was, you know, the city is facing a $7 million deficit for the fiscal year budget, so kudos, and just huge appreciation to the staff and your leadership.
Thank you.
Well, it's real nice to have y'all doing this, because we're out front with it. There's another agency that's hiding their deficit, and I'm really happy to hear this. Thank you very much.
Well, let's, let's not forget that we had to eat, like, you figured it out, what, $6.3 million this last fiscal year, too, from the state taxation thing?
That's right.
That was a huge hurdle to overcome.
Right.
Any other questions, Mr. Azzi?
No, just, I was going to say ditto, same thing, Andrew, and particularly with what, what staff did with fire, and then with this, it's pretty incredible.
Yeah, I know everyone said it, but I want to add my thanks, too, this is going to be the last budget process, and it's truly a breath of fresh air, just how this has gone, and just want to thank staff, it's been, we've gotten all the information, and thank you for putting our priorities in there. I just think you guys have done an amazing, amazing job for the city, everyone in this room, really. Thank you very much.
And, Mr. Mayor, I just want to say, I couldn't do my job without the team that's around me, and, and they are a great team, and they're very dedicated to what they do, so I want to first express my thanks to them. And then I do want to thank the council for giving me the opportunity to, to be your manager and having the confidence in me. I, I appreciate it, and hopefully I prove to you every day that I'm up for the job, so thank you.
It's only when you throw me under the bus that I have problems with, Mr. Klinger. Anybody got anything else you want to bring up? Chair'll entertain a motion for my favorite motion.
No, public comment.
Oh, I have to ask public comment.
Mr. Mayor, before we get to public comment, I think the council needs, needs to decide whether we're going to have a meeting on Monday or not.
Yes, we do need to decide.
I think we decided, haven't we?
I don't think we need one.
If none of us show up, does that, does that?
We won't have a quorum, so.
Yes, absolutely, no, I don't.
No, I, I would, let's have a motion not to have a meeting on Monday.
Well, we're not agendized to have a motion, so we just have to cancel the meeting.
We still have to meet on the 15th.
Yes, we have to meet on 15th.
Mr. Mayor, you are agendized to give direction to staff on the budget, and you could say that the direction is not to have a budget meeting.
Okay, the motion's the direction not to have a meeting, and what do y'all say? Second? All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no, motion carries unanimously. Now, my favorite, now I have to ask for public comment. Any public comment? You're too late, we're not letting you speak today.
I have nothing to say.
Thank you, thank you.